Good evening. It is now six o'clock and we will begin, I hereby call the June 18th, 2024 City Commission Meeting to Order. City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Adamchak?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Here.
Commissioner Mata?
Here.
Commissioner Mitten?
Here.
Mayor, we have five Commissioners present. The quorum of three is met.
Thank you. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have one proclamation this evening. Jerdean Coleman, Betty O., and Dr. Zelia Wiley, will you please join me in front?
City of Manhattan Proclamation. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves in Confederate Territory free, paving the way for the passing of the Thirteenth Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States, and word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was delayed some two and one-half years to June 19th, 1865, in reaching authorities and African-Americans in the South and southwestern United States. And Emancipation Day observations are held in different days in different states, in the South and Southwest, and in other parts of the nation. And whereas June 19th has special meaning to African-Americans, and it's called Juneteenth, combining the words "June" and "19th", and it's been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. This is the fourth year that Juneteenth will be celebrated as a federal holiday, this year on Wednesday, June 19th, 2024, and whereas this marks the 36th year that Juneteenth has been celebrated in Manhattan. The theme of this year's Juneteenth celebration is honoring our past, shaping our future, and after years of unprecedented challenges in our nation, state, and city, this is an opportunity to come together as a community regardless of age, color, disability, ethnicity, familial status, gender, national origin, race, religious belief, gender identity, or sexual orientation, to learn about the importance of this day. Now therefore, I, Susan E. Adamchak, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby declare Wednesday, June 19th, 2024, as Juneteenth in the City of Manhattan, Kansas, and I urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city, and to join in the celebration and activities. In witness thereof, I have hereto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Manhattan to be affixed this 18th day of June, 2024.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jerdean Coleman. I am the Chair for the Manhattan Juneteenth Committee this year, and I have some of my committee members here as well. I just want to take a moment to say thank you for the continued support from the City of Manhattan, specifically from the Parks and Recreation Department. Without their ongoing support, we could not put on an event of the caliber that we do every year. And as the proclamation said, Juneteenth is really about coming together. Juneteenth is about Freedom Day. It is a celebration of Black joy, and so we are honored to be able to accept this proclamation from the city, and we hope that if you have a Juneteenth t-shirt from any year, that you will join us tomorrow on Juneteenth and wear that t-shirt proudly in the City of Manhattan.
Hi, my name is Betty O., and the reason why we're all here, just a little bit of history. Her name is Opal Lee. Ms. Opal Lee was born in 1926, Marshall, Texas, retired teacher, counselor, and activist, and she's in the movement to make Juneteenth a federal-recognized holiday. She walked 1,600 miles from Fort Worth, Texas to DC to draw attention to the importance of Juneteenth. At 89 years old, she walked 2.5 miles. That's why we're here. So I do want to recognize her. I want to thank all of the committee members. We cannot do it without the sponsors, without the community, and the committee members that are not here, which is Ms. Alberto Jamot, is that his name, pronouncing correctly, Sonia Dave Baker, Lydia Boyer, hello, Betty O., Andre Bean, Vern Hendricks, Felix Jimenez, and Derek Thomas. We cannot do it by ourselves. So you guys, thank you. It's for our community, within our community, and we just had a grand time this year. So thank you, community. Thank you, city.
I noticed one other thing that we just came miss in saying, our volunteers. We have our committee, and this year, every year, I am Zelia Wiley with Kansas State University. And so what we do every year is we have our students to come in. This is part of their community service. And like even mentioning with Commissioner Mitten, we have really enjoyed getting our volunteers to see what Manhattan is all about, because some of these students might be interested in graduate school. So they see that we understand, and I'm originally from Texas, Fort Worth, Texas, as a matter of fact. So my father was a teacher, as well as Ms. Lee, and so to know that we are here, and I'm in the community for over 30 years, and I've been in this community for over 20, that we do recognize Juneteenth. It is about freedom. It's about navigating and understanding difference, because the goal is for us to get along, to move forward, and we are examples to take to generations. So I have to thank our volunteers from all over the nation. We at 30, that did so much for us here in Manhattan. And thank all of you, and thank you so much for recognizing us. I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry. And today, we received from the Neighborhood Athletic Association, as well as Race and Reconciliation, Kansas State University got the Juneteenth Award here in the state of Kansas. So we're the Organization of the Year recognized today at 12:00 noon at the Rotunda. So we're just kicking off everything great. Today, June 18th, so tomorrow, Kansas State University participated in the federal holiday, and we got that award today. So just so honored. It was myself, Dean Mitten, with the College of Agriculture, and Dr. Raina Johnson that accepted the award. So Manhattan, we are on the map. So let's definitely give ourselves a round of applause.
This is our opportunity for public comment, to receive comments not related to an item on the agenda. Members of the public who signed up in person on this list at the podium before the meeting can go first. Any other member of the public in the audience may then stand and be recognized to come forward. If you haven't already signed up to speak, be sure to sign in once you do go to the podium. Please state your name and residential address or organization you are representing for the record and for those who are watching or listening tonight. Each speaker has five minutes, can speak only once, and must stop speaking when the timer sounds. Neither the Commission nor the staff will answer questions or debate an issue. We will take your comments under advisement. So Rosemary Lox is the first person up.
I have an issue on one that's on the agenda. Can I address it?
No.
Do I get to speak again, or do I have to wait? Mine was multiple issues.
If it's on the agenda, you need to wait for the item. If it's not on the agenda...
Well, I have something separate from the agenda.
You can return.
I can return. Okay. My name is Rosemary Lox. As many of you know, I ran for Commission and came in, I think, about sixth. One of my issues is the way that the vacancy was filled. I watched your meeting that night on video, and you had two perfectly good people that one, two of you presented as replacements, and then neither one of you voted for the person. It looks to me like there was some favoritism. Sorry, Ms. Mitten, but I do believe that there was some favoritism someplace. Not that I would have gone ahead and accepted, because I've realized that there's a lot more to the job than I might have been ready for. But you know what? I paid my money, and I felt like at least those on the election last year should have been addressed, even if they were no more qualified than the first time any one of you ran for Commission. Okay, that's one issue that's over and done. Let's see. Now I've even forgotten my train of thought. Oh, I've been out of civil service for, since 19. All of my life, I've been in a service to communities in one fashion or the other. I understand how a person can feel that I don't have to ask anybody. I'm in charge. No, you people work for us. We're the ones that give you the yay and the nay, and I don't appreciate finding out that the attitude of some, even on the existing committee, is one I don't have to ask the citizens. So I want you to keep it in mind, that a lot of people are watching you, and you need to ask the city before you do anything. Thank you.
Mike Chaney. Oh, sorry, if you want to address something on the agenda. Jessica Winters.
Jessica Winters, 408 Houston Street. Good evening and welcome to the show. As much as these meetings can feel endless, one thing I have learned through my ongoing research is that there is always a story to be told. Just like many of our closest friends, favorite shows, games, and the stories we grew up with, the deeper you dig, the more the overarching narrative has a way of pulling you in, engaging you emotionally and making you feel for things outside of yourself. So let me tell you a tale, a tale of corruption, incompetence, and the small folk who genuinely care trying to save a building, or you could even say a city, from falling into ruin. Let's first introduce our characters. We have our revolving cast of Commission members, sometimes different, ever the same, a greedy real estate developer and hotelier named Rick, Rick's henchman, Brad, our protagonist, the parking authority led by Adrian, and our financiers and victims, the small folk of the Little Apple. The downtown parking garage was built in 2010, after the City Commission awarded $7 million to Rick for the construction of the garage. His work was substandard. When it was time to inspect the garage, then-City Manager, Rob Fair, admitted that his inspectors missed vital defects in its construction due to inexperience. For the next 13 years, the Commissioners failed to put a maintenance plan or budget in place for the garage, and the city did not charge for the parking. Although Rick certainly did, he started charging hotel guests $10 a day to use this public infrastructure, not a penny of which was ever put back into the garage or the city. Inevitably, the structure was not maintained or properly inspected until our protagonist arrives. The newly forged parking authority entered the scene in 2022. The garage was falling apart at the seams, out of code, out of federal compliance. Adrian coordinated many experienced inspectors to come out and inspect the garage. The parking authorities spent endless hours getting the garage back up to standard. Along the way, they saved us in excess of $40,000 through hard work, dedication, and heart. They hand-painted all the lines and tracked down rare parts and equipment, never mind the fees and fines associated with being out of a federal compliance, and worst case, someone could have been seriously injured or killed by the crumbling infrastructure. Over the next five years, our small community will have to shell out an anticipated $1.4 million to keep the structure operational and staffed. To cover these costs, Adrian and her team came up with a plan and pay structure very similar to what they had already implemented in Aggieville. That is, until it affected the purse strings of Hilton owner Rick and his GM Brad, who was quoted in the Mercury as saying, "The garage is basically a front door to my hotel, and I want to make sure we're doing everything we can to do our part, because those are generally our guests." Rick and Brad have confused public infrastructure with their private property for so long that not only did Brad call it his front door, he admitted in a Commission meeting that Rick had been charging his guests to use public infrastructure. In that same meeting, Brad complained about the new rates. He said that the Hilton had signed private contracts with convention organizers for years to come, offering complimentary parking for their attendees. Once the city began charging for parking, Brad had only two options: meet his private contractual obligations by paying the guests' parking fees himself, or refuse to pay for parking, breach the terms of the contract, and risk losing the sale. He picked option three: go to the Commission for special treatment, and he succeeded. The city came back with a 50% discount, but Rick and Brad were not pleased. So Brad wrote in an option four: cry to the Chamber of Commerce, and it worked. Every Commissioner agreed to subsidize convention attendees' parking until 2028, ironically funded through the TGT tax. I think we can all remember the community's response during the initial implementation of parking fees in the Aggieville garage. Dozens of people spoke out on behalf of the community during those meetings. 5,900 citizens signed a petition, and it took months to get anything remotely workable. Even when the small businesses were at risk of closing and our citizens were having to decide whether they could afford to go to work, did they ask for all-day free parking? No. Did they demand a bailout? No. Why is it that 5,900 citizens have to work so much harder to get so much less than one aristocrat and his henchmen?
Jason and Brittany, you're both wanting to address parks?
You.
You.
Kathy and Gary.
Good evening, Commissioners. Gary Olds, 3308 Frontier Circle. I'll bet you can guess why I'm here. You're right, property taxes. It's a never-ending story. It'll continue until, well, let's just say forever. I just want to make the public aware that yesterday, yeah, yesterday, the RCPD approved, the RCT, the Law Board, is my understanding, and I'm just speaking from my understanding. I actually haven't read it, so perhaps it is public, that they've approved the 2025 budget, which I'm not sure that everybody's aware that 80% of the funding of the RCPD budget, as I understand it, comes from the tax revenue that the City of Manhattan collects. Jason did a good job last year of clarifying to the public just how much money, or percent of money, I don't remember which it was, that you really don't have a say on. You have to take it out of your budget, and you have to pass it over to RCPD. And the county, they paid 20%, plus I think they paid medical and, and what is it, capital outlays, buildings, things like that. So that's really important to remember, because everybody who lives in the City of Manhattan, which I assume is a lot of people in this room, pays 100% of that bill, because they pay it through the county and they pay it through the city. I bring that up to you all because I believe that increase is going to be ballpark, 5.85, oh, can't read, 5.885%, which equates to $1.8 million. So if we stay on this track, you can plan on it. Next year, there'll be over $30 million for law enforcement. So I think I pointed this out last time or the time before, did a little quick math based on the residents in the county, and that's not just, just a hair south of $400 for each and every person that lives in Riley County. Just a hair short of $400, based on the population of the county. That'd be 800 for my family. Oh, I left out, remember, the kids don't pay property taxes. So the question is, for Commissioner Mata to take back to the RCPD Board, what is law enforcement supposed to cost? I've heard somebody tell me, "Ah, we got a really good deal here in Riley County." And maybe we do. That may be true, but I don't think the public knows that. So it might be an interesting study, or maybe there's somebody on the state level that knows exactly what fairness is with regards to property taxes. Regarding local property taxes, last year, I believe, you had a very small increase, and I congratulate you for that, or those Commissioners that were on the Commission at that time. But now we have some new faces, some new interests, some new desires. But yet, we're also going to have the Revenue Neutral Hearing, and I assure you, I'll be back, Lord willing, and I'm healthy. Hopefully others will come this year and express their concern. I would ask that you set a goal among yourselves as Commissioners, to see how close, how close you can get to the Revenue Neutral Number. Based on listening to Jason, it's going to be tough. Maybe more of the reserves can be put toward the budget. I don't know. Some of the money for RCPD's, their reserves was put toward the budget, which helps out a little bit. Big issue, as I brought up last time, is personnel cost. My encouragement would be figure out a way to freeze salaries for several years of the upper-income people. I don't have a heart, I don't have any problem with people who are what I'll call laborers, but the folks that are managing, I don't think you need to be as generous as you are to them. Doesn't mean you want to snub them. I don't mean that. But you've got to find a way to control personnel expenses, because I believe, if I understand correctly, that's what's really eating the budget. And when we throw in RCPD, it makes it even tougher on Jason and the staff to figure it out. So see how close you can get to the Revenue Neutral Number. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Is there anyone else who would like to address items not currently on the agenda?
Mayor, I just want to clarify one point. Actually, the property tax increase for RCPD will be 6.84%. The 5.88 was confusing, the way they wrote it up. The actual tax increase will be 6.84%.
Good evening. Mel Borst. I'm a member of the Committee on our annual Flag Day, and our ninth annual Flag Day last week was very successful, in part because of the support of the City of Manhattan facilitating the site here, and also Mayor Adamchak's comments. So really want to thank you all for helping with that this year, and look forward to working with you next year. Thank you.
Any further comments? Hearing none. The general public comment period is now closed. The next item is open Commissioner comments. Commissioner Mitten? Mata?
I just wanted to say I'm kind of bummed they left. Had a great time on Saturday at the Unity Walk on Juneteenth. Got to meet some new people and learn some new things, and hope to see even more people out next year.
Ditto. It was fun. Got to wear my t-shirt. And also, we had an interesting meeting with the Northview Neighborhood, and I'm hoping they're going to get sort of involved. And many of the neighborhood associations are sort of getting back to each other and talking about issues, and so we really support that.
And I also offered my congratulations to the Juneteenth organizers. I don't know if you're all aware, there was a fashion show on Thursday night, there was a concert and barbecue contest on Friday, and other events at, including the Unity Walk and food and entertainment at the Douglas Center, Douglas Center Park. So it was a lovely event, and I hope more people do participate next year. Okay. The next item up is our Consent Agenda. The items on the Consent Agenda are those of a routine housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the City Commission. A Commissioner may request that an item be moved for separate discussion and consideration immediately following the Consent Agenda, or at a different point on the agenda if desired by the Commission. Does the Commission have any questions or comments on any of the Consent Agenda items? Karen?
Yeah, could I just ask about F1? It says we authorize interim City Manager to approve additional $50,000 in change orders. What's the contract for? I mean, how much are we talking?
This is out of Roger Schultz Community Park. Do you have it, Jared?
Yeah, the contract total is $326,254. So $326,000 is the contract total, and then upon that approval, it would allow the City Manager to increase with change orders up to 50,000.
Okay, that's kind of a, that'd be 18% up if we did that. Anyway, just, I think, since we're talking about parks tonight, we need to talk about what we're spending on parks.
There is a match with that, a 50% match. So just keep that in mind. Is the change orders matched as well or not? No?
I would just like to commend City Staff for the memo that describes the Community Development Block Grant, 2024 Annual Action Plan. I thought that was very well-prepared and laid out activities that'll be funded under the program. So thank you, whoever was working on that. Is there any comment on items on the Consent Agenda from the public? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Is there a motion from the Commission to approve the Consent Agenda?
I move we approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Any comments or discussion? Commissioner Mata has made the motion, and Commissioner Opel had seconded. City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamchak?
Yes.
Motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you. We will now move on to the items on the general agenda. First item is Consider Adopting Move MHK Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan, PR 2323, CIP CP 406P.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, we're bringing the Move MHK Comprehensive Parks and Recreation Master Plan up for adoption. This is the first comprehensive Parks and Rec Master Plan since 1992. On September 5th, the Commission authorized Vireo and their team to begin the master planning process, which we did, and they're going to go through a fairly comprehensive presentation that's going to bring this project to its end. Originally, we intended this to be kind of a 10-year plan, but based on the information that we found and the cost and recommended phasing of those projects, we've now extended that out to 20 years. So the scope of work we challenged them with was to develop and execute a public engagement strategy, complete a system-wide needs assessment and analysis, update the indoor aquatic and recreation center feasibility study, provide analysis on forecasted needs to determine Parks and Recreation strategic direction, and develop recommendations and the implementation of those strategies. So with that, now that you know kind of, we go back and revisit how we got this started, I'm going to turn it over to, I assume, Steve from Vireo, and he is going to take you through this.
Thanks, Aaron. I am Steve Rhodes with Vireo, and a part of our team, or part of our team members that are here tonight is Larry Reynolds with Vireo, Pat O'Toole with Barry Dunn, SFS Architecture, Waters Edge, Tracy Anderson with Anderson Knight Architecture, and ETC Institute, the Public Survey Company. So as Aaron mentioned, this is a, the Move MHK Plan is a strategic... So as Aaron mentioned, this is a, the Move MHK plan is a strategic plan moving the department forward over the next 20 years. It looks at the department and the park system holistically over that timeframe. It includes annual reviews by staff and in periodic public surveys to maintain the public desires, and then also to maintain relevance for the Parks and Recreation Department. Some of what's included in the plan, we provided a demographic in Parks and Recreation trends, information, our summary of the community engagement plan, park inventory and assessment and analysis of each park in the system, and analysis of the current recreation and programs offered, an assessment of the current condition of aquatics, and then an operations and staffing analysis, and then a plan of action. The detail of each of these sections is found in the appendices of the document, which is much, much larger than the first part. So like I mentioned, we did sort of a demographic and trends finding of the community. We followed that up with outreach, with community engagement, in-person meetings, and focus group meetings, and also discussions with our steering committee, asked them questions about the current condition of the park system, the recreation programs, and the future desires moving forward. We also asked very similar questions in an online format to receive input throughout the community. And in addition to the online engagements, we provided a statistically valid survey that was mailed across the community, and then had the priority investment rating with park amenities and also recreation programs to determine really what was the high priorities across the community for park amenities and recreation programs moving forward. And then also, what was the importance of providing high-quality parks for the City of Manhattan? And 75% of the community said it was very important to them. I'm now going to have Larry Reynolds come up and talk about the park inventory assessment and analysis.
So Steve mentioned we took inventory of your parks and park amenities, conducted an assessment and analysis both of the parks themselves, but as the system as a whole. One of the first things we did was to conduct a level of service to determine how much parkland you have, how much should you have, what we found in that exercise, that you don't need any additional parkland, you've got enough to carry you out, at least for a population growth of another 9,000 people. So for the foreseeable future, you seem to be good. It also kind of indicated, it was kind of an early indication that the focus is probably going to be on taking care of what you have. We looked at service areas for parks, as well as park amenities, key park amenities. So looking at parks, the red circles represent a five-minute walk to a mini park. The orange areas are a 10-minute walk to a neighborhood park. And then the other areas are niche-type of parks and natural areas. So it's fairly well-covered with access to parks from most neighborhoods throughout the city. We then also divided up the city into four distinct areas, just to kind of take a 30,000-foot level look at equitable distribution of parks and park amenities. What we found in this is that towards the east side, so the dividing line, the red line towards the middle, kind of breaks the city up in east and west. And the numbers on the, on the left side of the line represent those areas one and four, and on the right side of the line, it's areas two and three. So you can see the comparison in terms of park acreage, population density, overall population, housing units, at-risk population, and median income, and what the comparison is between those two. On the areas two and three, towards the east side of town, there's less acreage in parks. There are more people per square mile, there's more people in general, more housing units, higher at-risk population, and lower median income. Within the plan, you'll see these areas divided up, and you can see the comparison. There's a lot more detailed information that you can dig into, including tapestry segmentation. That kind of gives some behaviors and patterns of people who live in those areas. One of the things we see as you look at those different areas is the percent of parkland in terms of land use, total land use across them. So land use for area one, Parks and Rec represents 8% of total land use. And area two, 7%, and area three, it's 6%, and then area four, Parks and Rec has 23% of the total land use of that area. So this is kind of blown up, and we'll kind of touch base on each of those, some of the things you'll see. For planning area one, we'll notice that this area has the second-oldest median age, the second-highest median income, and also has the highest population of youth under 18, as well as seniors. This is the northwest area of the community. Planning area two, this is sort of the central area, including the K-State campus. This has the highest population density, largest number of households below poverty, the largest number of households with a disability, and the daytime population of this area is over 30,000 people.
So as a part of our effort, we were asked to sort of master plan three parks, City Park, Northview, and Northeast Park. So just a quick overview of the City Park plan. It maintains the passive green space on the west. There's a diagonal promenade that cuts from the northwest to the southeast. A redeveloped family park area down on the southeast, transitioning up to court space in the middle with pickleball, basketball. Additional sand volleyball courts are added. A central gathering plaza, expand the outdoor theater space, a recreation aquatic center, parking for that center, and a skate park. Really taking a fresh look at the City Park and sort of activating it, creating this community-wide gathering space 12 months a year.
We made these plans, you'll see a couple more in a minute, available to the public at three different locations. We had an open house one night and asked for public comment on these. We also made it to the public through, available to the public through an online survey, and asked if folks supported this 20-year master plan for the park. For City Park specifically, 78% said yes, 22% said no. On the east side of town, in section three, this is where you have Northview Park, Northeast Community Park. This area has the second-highest population density, the second-highest population of youth under 18, and the lowest share of parkland across the board.
The master plan for Northview Park adds parking on the north side of the park in addition to pickleball courts, basketball courts, fitness area, fitness court area in the middle, a new playground, shelters, restroom, retains the existing pool, and there's a loop trail around the park that also connects to the linear trail system. And then Northeast Community Park, this one is really sort of envisioned with three small soccer fields, three full-size soccer fields, a central lawn area with a playground, four baseball/softball fields, two T-ball fields, a loop trail, expanded parking, and a prairie pavilion/event venue for the department to utilize throughout the year.
And then the southwest area of the community, section four, this has the highest median income, the lowest population density, and population itself. It has the oldest median age and the largest share of parkland. We also did a level of quality assessment for each of the park within the plan. You'll see this assessment, you'll see what it entails, how different aspects of each park rated, from accessibility to character, comfort, usability, and condition of the amenities. All of those things go into the overall ranking. You'll see on the right side, there is a number of parks that were good, a few that were poor, and a lot that were fair. I'm going to ask Pat to talk about the recreation and program analysis.
Thanks, Larry. I'm Pat O'Toole with Berry Dunn. And what we did was look at the, from a recreation program perspective, looked at the assessment analysis of the current programs and what people said in the needs assessment that they'd like to see. The core areas that we looked at were sports programs, enrichment and instructional programs, facility-based rec programs, aquatic facilities and programs, senior and adaptive recreation programs, and youth enrichment. Some of the key findings that, and recommendations that we came up with was to coordinate with Fort Riley as a program partner. Activity guides should be more consistent with respect to descriptions of age group categories. Metrics are recommended for all the programming with an emphasis on new programs and program registration per quarter. Use of the program lifecycle is recommended. Eight program areas were identified to focus on. Those were adult fitness and wellness programs, community special events, adult water aerobics and a fitness, adult lap swimming, adult nature programs, adult water, or outdoor water recreation, cultural enrichment programs, and senior health and wellness programs. Adult program gaps is the largest area that should be addressed. As we looked at percentage of population, 20 to 54. Age group, 58% of your population, and only 4% of the programs that Parks and Rec offers. The other age groups are well exceeded the population versus the programs that are being offered.
Tracy Anderson with Anderson Knight Architects. I'll be pinch hitting for Waters Edge and for SFS Architecture tonight. One of the things that Waters Edge did is they came and assessed all of our outdoor aquatic centers, so Seaco Park, Northview, and City Park. And they found that those are basically aging as one would expect. They found them in relatively good condition. They've been being maintained as best as possible. And that, you know, they, the way they typically put it, an aquatic center, outdoor aquatic center usually has a lifespan of about 25 to 30 years. I believe City Park was done in 2010, and Seaco and Northview, one or two years after that. So we're getting close to what they would consider that halfway point on lifespan for those. But again, they did find those to be in relatively good condition for where they're at today. And then, and then we were asked as a team to develop a concept for an indoor aquatics and recreation center. And so what you see up here is that concept of what that could look like if it was combined as one facility. And so you're seeing, yeah, if you're able to follow my mouse. This area here is primarily the aquatics portion of that. It's showing three bodies of water, a 50-meter pool, a deep-water pool for diving and for other uses, and then a indoor leisure component. It's also showing some of the outdoor, or outside of that spaces, that is where entry would come in, where you would have, you know, the reception desk and all those things. Locker rooms are in this part. And then some of this expands onto maybe a daycare or a childcare while somebody's there using the facility, maybe a party room or two and some meeting rooms. This element is showing a gymnasium and some turf space. And then there's also consideration for an indoor walking track that would sort of loop around these elements. This component here has been envisioned as a future replacement for the aquatics, outdoor aquatics center that's in City Park when it does meet its lifespan and needs to be replaced. So in the plan, you've seen a spot just sort of allocated for that location. During the process of this, we've come to realize that more than likely, this would need to be a phased approach to a building like this. So again, I'll be very sort of adamant that everybody consider this a concept. A phased approach would mean you'd have to consider this a little bit differently down the road, so just keep that in mind.
Okay, based on the concept that Tracy just went through, we put an operations and maintenance budget together for an annual expenditure. These are listed here for the indoor aquatics-only expenses and revenues there for a net annual O&amp;M subsidy of $989,205, which is 32% cost recovery. And looking at the combination, which would be the Phase Two, would be adding the rec center, revenues and expenses there for an annual subsidy level of $801,647, which is 59% cost recovery. We also ran these O&amp;M figures out 50 years. We included cost of construction, cost of major capital repair and equipment replacement. So basically, this slide represents a 50-year total cost of ownership comparison. Column one is the aquatics facility. Boils down to over 50 years, $175 million annual cost of ownership, $3.5 million. And then adding the recreation portion of that, 10 years down the road, is a Phase Two, and ran that out 40 years. So they both come up to the 50-year life expectancy of the facility. And again, the total cost of that facility over 50 years combined is $220 million, or an annual cost of ownership of $4.4 million. So there's almost a $900,000 difference in the annual ownership once you add the rec center. We also looked at the operation and staffing of the entire Park and Recreation Department, comparing it to National Park and Recreation standards based on population band between 50,000 and 99,000. Found out that operating expenses per capita were right in line with the NRPA standards. The Park and Recreation revenues per capita were right in line. And revenues on a percentage of cost recovery, the difference was NRPA averages about 25% and Manhattan Parks and Rec was at 13. So the key challenges, findings, and recommendations we came up with was, in looking at cost recovery, the department isn't apples-to-apples across the board in the Parks and Recreation Department. So the city's financial system doesn't lend itself to providing management information needed to make informed budgetary decisions. The city investment in the delivery of Parks and Recreation services is above average from the National Park and Recreation metrics. The department requires greater level of The department requires greater level of analysis and application for a cost recovery model. Zero-based budgeting exercise is recommended. Staffing is at a higher level than the NRPA standards, so the recommendation would be as vacancies come up to maybe spread the tasks differently and for increased effectiveness without adding staff. Pricing for different facilities rentals, cost recoveries are less than 100%. We typically see that that's basically somebody reserves something that's giving them exclusive use of a public facility, and therefore is typically at least 100% of what it costs to clean that, pick up trash, those types of things. And with the Discovery Center, looking at maybe a break-even of four or five visits on a membership, annual membership pass, and the regular admission fees haven't been adjusted for quite a while, so to use incrementals over the years to kind of catch up with that process, that would improve cost recovery.
So we've run through about 150 pages worth of the document and 28 slides, and we get to the end of the document, which is an action plan that establishes four overarching goals. Goal number one is to enhance the level of quality in parks. Goal number two is focus on quality improvements that consider future needs and growth. Goal number three is enhance the delivery of programs and services. And goal number four is to enhance the operational efficiency and financial health of the department. With that comes a capital needs opinion of costs for all of the improvements that we've recommended in the plan. This comes to about $200 million annually over the next 20 years. That would be about $10 million in improvements per year. This also does include the $110 million for the indoor aquatic rec center space. With that, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this project the last, over the last 10 months, and would ask for questions.
Okay. Can we talk, I was curious about the, I guess it wasn't really a survey, but in some of the master plan, you had asked, would you support this 20-year master plan? How was that? When, where was that? I guess that was just a kind of a question-and-answer type deal at some of the community engagement events?
Yeah, are you talking for the three master plans?
Yeah.
The three parks? Yeah, we had over a four, five-day period, we made it available. We had almost 300 people that provided input on that.
Okay. And so it was just a line kind of deal? Anybody?
Yeah, we were, it was in-person at the Anthony Rec Center, at Eisenhower Rec Center, and here at the Douglas Center. So it was both in-person and online.
Okay. I was kind of curious about some of the challenges that we might see operating youth or adult sports programs in competition with some of these private organizations. And I guess that kind of ties in with this pyramid methodology. I was a little curious about that, if we could talk about that a little bit more?
Sure, we can talk cost recovery. So are we, we are not operating, we're not operating any programs in competition with any private entity. We are doing two different services. Ours is a recreation service. They would consider that a competitive service. So, and my son is a part of a competitive baseball team. So the recreation service, you would explore as kind of the introduction to sport in that regard versus the competitive is going to be at a higher funding rate, and they're going to travel typically, whether they're nonprofit or for-profit, that's kind of the system that they're in.
Okay. I know in the past, we talked a lot about operating subsidy, and it seems like that was kind of more heavily weighed than overall cost of ownership. Seems like kind of in the long term, yeah, so the annual operating subsidy does kind of balance out with the rec center. This doesn't.
So remember, back to the scope of work, was to explore how this would work.
Sure.
Not necessarily make a determination on which facility we would build. That would actually come down to the commission to make that decision.
Okay.
This is the work that we asked for in the scope of work.
Peter, can I jump in?
Sure.
With a question. What's the, our current pool subsidy for our three that we have?
$1.1 million last year for three pools, total for 11 weeks. So one way to think about that is we're spending $100,000 a week while they're open.
Cool. Can you talk a little bit more about how City Park was selected as kind of the concept site for the pool and like kind of the decision-making process there?
Sure. So part of it goes back to these planning areas, and there had been three previous studies that looked at location. The most recent was 2008, that had several locations on it. Part of their task was to take those existing studies and incorporate them into this document, update them obviously. So when we started out, we looked at Seco, we looked at Northeast Park, and we looked at City Park. All, Seco Park, based on some of the work we have done with the ballfield renovations and tennis courts, we recognize is probably not a viable option, at least at this point, since we are not the property owner. Northview would cost a significant, or excuse me, Northeast Park would cost a significant amount of money to raise the base of that land out of the floodway, and so therefore it was settled on City Park. That happened to mirror the 2008 study that recommended City Park as the primary location. At the end of the day, that determination is a concept, it's not a decision. And so moving forward, we would, we would potentially look at, if citizens decided to fund this, we could look at where to place that more in depth. I do think some initial feedback, again, that's not statistically valid feedback, shows that there is some support for the location, both from an economic standpoint, but when you get into the demographics of why that place was selected, where it hit everything except for youth, right? And the youth is in the northwest corner of the city as the highest segment of that planning area. Northwest. Isn't it, wasn't it northwest, Planning Area 1? Yeah. So Planning Area 1, 2600, and Planning Area 3 is 21. So at the end of the day, you know, land could be acquired in some form or fashion. But again, one of the desirable traits about City Park is creating this centralized community gathering spot. That's why it was kind of planned out with this kind of concept, based on some of the placer data that we're tracking and how it's being currently used. That's why this was located. But again, I think further analysis can be done. Again, this was for a guide, not necessarily a decision.
Sure. Okay, so I have like just a couple more questions, sorry.
Sure.
This is a big document, so. In the Trends section, there's a section on page 20 on youth sports. It's page 11 of the PDF document. I can just read it, I have it up. So on youth sports, it says, "There are many private travel sports organizations that serve children and teens across the country. The Aspen Institute estimates that many of these clubs will not survive the COVID-19 pandemic. Sponsorships are likely to diminish. Many coaches who went without a paycheck for many months might have moved on. And 50% of parents fear that their children might get sick if they resume youth sports when restrictions are lifted. A total of 46% of parents fear they will become ill watching a youth sports event." So I'm just kind of curious how old that section is, because it seems a little bit outdated, and how often that gets updated.
I'll have to let Pat answer that one.
Yes, typically, I would say about every three to five years it's updated.
Okay.
And some of it is national sporting goods, you know, runs, reports out, and based on the type of, the amount of money and the type of equipment being bought.
Sure.
Compared to that trend. So it is, it's very difficult now to get up-to-date post-COVID. People just aren't doing it. They kind of took a hiatus in there. So to answer your question, it's about three to five years, but it is the most recent out there.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know if many other people are actually going to, I don't know if many other people are actually going to go in-depth and actually read that, but it's just something that stuck out to me.
Sure.
And then, how much did we end up paying for this? I know the contract was for $175,000.
$200,000.
Okay. Was there like a bid process or selection process or anything?
Yes, back in September.
Okay.
And a normal request for qualifications, and in that process, we had a commissioner sitting on the selection panel.
Okay. So my other questions are actually for the commissioners, just things for us to consider and discuss. I think we really would need to think about what we want to see Parks and Rec look like in 20 years, and how we want to prioritize this department within our community. Personally, I have always felt that parks should be considered as a utility, because they are just as integral to having a good community as, you know, sewers or roads. And they often are some of the first things that people see when they're looking, you know, where they're going to live and things like that. So really, I kind of would like us to talk about that a little bit more amongst ourselves. I know it's kind of difficult, given our seating arrangement, but a little bit of discussion about that would be great.
Okay. Do you have the ability to bring up page 39?
Not, not on display. I mean, we can, we don't have the full document.
You have that ability. Page 39 is a level of service by type of facility. First, may I say, I think the inventory was very helpful, talking about the number of parks we have, what's good about them, what they need to do. And it was interesting to me that a number of them with very little, seriously very little dollars could be improved vastly, you know, especially when we're talking 200 million. The question I read through all this, and on page 39, it tells us the facilities, the population per facility, the population per facility in Manhattan, the current number of facilities in Manhattan, the suggested number of facilities, and the surplus or deficit. And under recreation centers, including gyms, it says that we have three, the suggested number are two, and that we have one too many, or have one surplus. So my question is, having read through all this, first of all, who asked for this concept of marrying indoor water and rec? I know we need indoor water, but it seems to me, there were just a lot of things with this whole thing that really, really bothered me. First of all, some of the numbers. The Discovery Center, for example, you used 2022 numbers. Of course, the Playscape renovation was, so that was closed for three months, so it's not surprising that the numbers were down. For 2023, there were 95,000 people who used it. And you talk about maybe the Discovery Center Foundation should fund certain things. It's given 1.2 to the Playscape and $60,000 to the van, and I don't think, having been a member of that board, that it was ever suggested that it might provide the infrastructure to run the place. I'm surprised the zoo was not at all involved in this whole study. The zoo is one of our major attractions, and it's expensive, and we should, I don't understand why it wasn't, you know, involved. You know, there's just a lot of little things, like at one point on one page, it said the most active thing for all the way across the top was fishing. And I don't know many kids who go fish, I mean, maybe there's just lots, but it said all the way from the little kids to the senior centers. Okay. So we know that this, this study was forwarded to us with a 5 to 2 Park and Rec Committee approval. But there were also five things that they added to that, five, you know, and I, do we have those tonight?
Yeah, I can, let me grab mine up.
Thank you.
There are four items. The, the park board, which was not, I want to be clear about this. We assigned a Move MHK steering committee that unanimously recommended this. But the park board, under the bylaws, also got to review it, and they, at the recommendations, they recommended adoption of this with the following caveats. The commission revisit the combined pool gymnasium facility versus an aquatic facility, only family-focused facility in regard to total costs and operational costs to include operational costs. Number two, the location of City Park be reviewed along with new additional plans for location of an indoor water facility. Number three, that an intergovernmental partnership be formed of the, of the city of Manhattan, Riley County, USD 383, and KSU regarding the new indoor water facility. The city commission requests clear financial costs, I'm sorry, number four, the city commission requests clear financial costs as they consider the Move MHK document. And number one, number four are in the document.
Where?
In the appendix.
Oh, sorry. Could we make sure that those are in the minutes, those four conditions, please? I didn't see a real breakout, and maybe it's asking for too much detail, but things like the barrier-free theater, or what was, how much we're seeing the use of the auditorium. We spent a lot of money, a lot of money, and we raised a lot of money to redo the city auditorium and to put into it great abilities for theater and microphones and lighting and all that kind of thing. And I just haven't seen that happen. But basically, I think that we should accept this study, and as I said, I think the inventory is excellent. But I'm still having to ask, who asked for this concept of rec and indoor, indoor water together? I don't, I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing people say, we want indoor water. No one's telling me that they want a rec complex, another rec complex.
Okay, I can understand that. Now, I see that as kind of two different questions. One, who asked to complete it? It was included in the scope of work?
And when I read it, it isn't, not at the very beginning, for sure.
The, the scope of work for the?
The indoor, the, yeah. I mean, I read the whole thing.
No, no, not in the document, in the RFQ to, it was included in that scope of work to complete this plan. And so the reason we did that is to complement the 2022 study that studied aquatics only, and that was truly to get to this answer right here. So that's where that came from. At the end of the day, the commission will decide whether they want to do aquatics only or aquatics and recreation, but having that full look at would the cost recovery on an indoor facility that has recreation components be more beneficial? And one of the reasons we look at this is all too often, people will look at this, which gives you one answer, but they don't include the capital costs, which is a different answer down here. And that's what we wanted to provide the commission with, so they could be fully informed when the time comes for that decision.
Well, I'm sorry, but I think losing less money is not a real good reason to do something. And I must echo Peter. I think we'd be in competition with a lot of private yoga studios and Max Fitness and all those people, and I don't think that's, you know, a positive way to go. So that's my two cents. But I, I do think we should go back and revisit, perhaps, you could give us, so we don't have to read through all this, the minor things we can do to make our parks more usable and to get some of the subpar's up to good.
Again, that would be in this kind of planning section here, and as we would have funds available, it would, this would be kind of how we implement.
But Aaron, I think what we need is to see this on a balanced page, so we don't have to paw through 156 pages. to paw through a hundred and fifty-six pages.
Five hundred and forty.
What?
Five hundred and forty.
Five hundred and forty, I didn't do all the appendices. Um, but this is basically, um, you know, we need you to help us identify what the needs are in the various parks now that we know her. Perhaps we, we don't even need all these parks. The one between Anderson and Grandview Terrace, I'm not sure that anyone knows that's a park and how they could get into it, and if they got into it, how they'd get out of it.
So in order for me to kind of provide that, this is the document I need.
Yeah.
And so.
You could make it.
How we implement that, how we implement that is, we, if this is adopted, we'll take that and start bringing things in front of the commission. First and foremost, the most important thing out of here for me is kind of the operations and staffing. That will address the immediate need. We will have these items, but we'll need capital funding to do them. But if we don't get our operations in line, we.
But I think we as commissioners have the obligation to know what needs to be done and to help you prioritize, you know, some of these things. And, um, at least from my point of view, indoor rec is not a priority, and indoor water is. And saying that we can't go to Seaco because it's not our land, we have never talked to the county commissioners about this. And individually, I've chatted with them, and there's no seemingly great obstacle. Um, I think we did not approach them when we did things for the Seaco ball fields as we should have. Um, and so they rightly were kind of unhappy about that. Um, but basically, I just, you know, I think we need to move forward. I'm ready to accept this report.
Yeah.
But I think you need to get some of the numbers in line, particularly with the Discovery Center, and I think you need to add the zoo, just so we know what's going out and what's coming in.
So the zoo, the reason they weren't included is they have a, uh, a capital improvement plan that was just completed. It will be a part of the, the update to this document.
Put it in here, then.
So it'll be six hundred.
Once this is adopted.
It's only six hundred pages, but, but I mean, you know.
So once this is adopted, that, that would then flow into one of the updates. But until the, the document's adopted, it's not official.
Okay. Um, Jamie has been wanting to say.
I know, I've been like holding my button down, Karen, I've been waiting. I just wanted to go back to Peter, you know, Peter threw out a question for discussion, and I, I wanted us to not miss this. And to kind of address, I think when we're looking at this document, we're looking at it today. But this is a twenty-year document, so I don't want us to lose sight of, of the, well, really, it's a beyond twenty-year, because, and we want it to have some fluidity to it, because if our needs change in ten years, we want to be able to shift focus. Um, you know, if, if we start executing all of these things today, in twenty years, we're gonna be behind, essentially. We have to keep it going. So to address the, the rec thing, Karen, I do think you're right in that this, you know, the information we had shows, okay, do we potentially today have, you know, don't need to pri, yes, we have adequate rec centers. You know, I think when it's really busy in Manhattan, some will argue, we don't have adequate rec centers. But I think we have to look at that as a future plan and a future potential, and not take that off the table and, and kind of box ourselves into another thing where, where we don't have an option when we need that in the future. So I see this as giving us options and opportunities. The page, oh, Erin moved the page on me, I was gonna, you're fine, where were you gonna?
I was gonna add here, so as you can see up there, it says aquatics and recreation added in year ten. So just to help further your point, we've talked about if this was funded through a sales tax, the earliest we could probably open the doors for an aquatic center would be twenty-thirty. Based on the total cost of a hundred and eleven million, there's no way to do that in twenty-thirty. It's just not possible, even if the best of circumstances, it's not possible. And so you would spend the time paying that off. And so really, when we talk about added in ten years, we're probably talking closer to twenty-forty for the rec center, and our needs may change. Now, the good news about that is we can wait till twenty-thirty-six, twenty-thirty-eight to make that decision. The decisions we would have to make with aquatics only is do we build it in a footprint that would allow us to add that on? And I think that can be done, regardless of the location that's chosen. So we would kind of be future-looking, but at the end of the day, we wouldn't necessarily commit ourselves to building that until it became closer to the time. So that's kind of how this phasing works throughout this plan. And I know we'll cover more with the, probably the funding next week. Um, but again, all of this has to be funded to be executed.
Erin, I have a question.
Yes.
Which is, would it be feasible, I think that a sales tax question would be much more palatable to the community if it did not include the rec center in it. Would it be feasible to move forward with a sales tax proposition at a lower level that would give you the operating funds you need, could allow for the construction of the pool, and revisit this in ten years when none of us are on the commission longer?
Hey, Susan, come on.
Speak for yourself.
Come on.
I'm gonna defer that till next week, when we go over that.
Yeah.
The quick answer is no. But I will defer that to where we go next week, and it has to do with the operations of aquatics only, uh, what that would cost in our current budget situation. So we'll, we'll, uh, we'll cover that, uh, next week.
Um, I have a couple of minor questions, relatively minor. Um, I have asked several times to see something about the methodology of the survey, um, including today, but, um, I do not see in this report the type of description of the survey that I would have seen in research reports I've written.
Sure.
And I would like the consultants, whoever was responsible for the community survey, to provide that information.
Yeah, it, so ETC is who completed that, and they do these surveys all across.
I don't care.
Okay. What I'm saying is they're not here tonight to describe the methodology. They were here back, uh, in April when we, uh, to talk about that.
And they were asked several questions about the methodology at that time, which they deflected.
Okay. Um, their methodology is listed out in the appendix, and, um.
Not in detail, not in, there's nothing about how many surveys were mailed, there's nothing about how participants were selected. You can't just say they were randomly selected. How were they, what randomization with method was used?
Okay, we'll get you that answer.
Um, on a personal note, um, if we're going to be building, uh, eight more, six more soccer fields at Northeast, um, in the trends section of the, of the document, you reference the growing interest in cricket. Uh, you notice that the American Cricket Team did quite well in the last several weeks of competition. We have a growing population, and it's becoming more diverse. We have had several cricket matches here informally in Manhattan. I would advise, or recommend, or suggest that at least two of those fields be considered to be amenable for cricket play.
Be pretty inexpensive, too.
So I know we're showing them as soccer, we would call those a multipurpose field that would be able to be used for multiple things, and we could create that distance that would be required for cricket.
But you've also been a little upset when cricket was played on soccer fields because of the, um, the compaction of the soil. So.
Well, that, that was because they didn't notify us that they were gonna be out there, not necessarily that they were out there because of the different kind of maintenance that it would require. Um, we have no problem providing spaces for people to participate in the sport of their choice. Um, we just would like to, to have that done through a process, so we can make sure that it's well taken care of.
John?
Yeah, I just want to say I don't have any problem adopting the plan. However, and I think it might even be good to build into our motion some of the points that were from the Parks and Rec, because I think these are on people's minds, and that way we know that we recognize them. I think the other thing is putting this in the context of the budget discussion we had at the last meeting. I mean, we're looking at substantial cuts, possibly tax increases, things like this. At the same time, we're talking about spending a lot of money on this program. So I think we have to rationalize these two things together. And, you know, how do we accomplish that? And I, you know, Karen brought up the parks or, you know, what, what things do we have excess of or that aren't used? So where can we trim so we have the stuff that people really want and people are really going to use? Uh, but I think, um, while we want to do this, and Peter brought up what do people see, public utility, things like that, at the same time, we have to take care of the basics first. Fire streets and everything else, and make sure that the trains run on time, uh, before we spend the money on some of the other stuff.
Jamie?
I, I just want to say, I think that that was where Peter's question was headed, was where are we as a commission ranking Parks and Rec within that, uh, in its importance of things, and, and how do we, how do we see it? Um, I don't know that we really had much of a discussion around it. I mean, I see it for, as a, you know, good economic impact, quality of life for current, and as a future, um, growth opportu, as in recruitment opportunity. Um, so that's where I, I mean, yes, I, I see the other things as, as the basics, and this is the, the plus that's gonna win us over when I'm, I'm thinking about communities.
I was interested in seeing how much satisfaction there was with the park facilities, given that the more objective, um, assessment found a lot of elements that were lower quality or poor condition. So I think even addressing some of those low-hanging fruit will, um, make the parks, uh, just enhance the parks and, and increase satisfaction and hopefully increase, um, community support.
And, and a lot of the, the suggestions, I mean, you know, here's a park that got fair, good, high, medium, fair, and came out, you know, fairly good. And what it said they needed was signage. I mean, you know, that's not, that's not unfixable easily. Um, there were several that signage kind of, you know, if you, if you get Bs and then one D, it'll lower you to C minus, um, when it's only something like signage or ADA accessibility or some, I mean, I know that can be expensive.
Erin, how are you prioritizing this action plan, even outside of the, the funding options? And I know you spoke a little bit about, I think, suggested changing the way a, a park ran. Can you talk a little bit more about your operations with that?
So regardless, like regardless of whether there's a sales tax, there's, there's multiple options to, to the funding. There's the existing funding that we are prepared to live within, and that's part of what next week will be about. Um, there's the opportunity to pass a sales tax that would kind of accomplish the biggest demand out of the surveys that we're seeing, which is this indoor aquatics facility. Um, there is, that could be put to a vote, let's just hypothetically say that got turned down. There's the opportunity to renew the quality of life to accomplish other items. Now, we won't be able to accomplish indoor water on that rate, but it would allow us to address several of these other options, and that one expires in twenty-twenty-eight. So operationally, there are several of these things that we can do that cost nothing, in fact, improve our efficiency and improve our cost recovery, which would in turn allow us to do more with the existing funds that we have. To your point, maybe it's something we can address with ADA or signage, you know, signage, knocking that off a little bit at a time at five thousand for one park probably isn't that, uh, that tall of an order to work into an existing budget. The big things need a bigger funding arm, and it, it's either gonna be there or it's not. And so we would continue to develop on our trends, we'll continue to update this plan. And I said all along, my end game here is to get CAPRA accredited, which means we're operating through best practices, recognized by a national organization. The first step in that is an adopted master plan. And so either way, regardless of whether it's funded at a one-cent sales tax, a renewed quarter cent, or existing funds, we're gonna move ahead with these if you adopt it. Most of that stuff that nobody else outside of us, uh, outside of myself and my, the staff in the department with the operations and trends, they, most people won't even read those sections. They see the concepts and they're taking that forward, which is okay. But there's a whole large portion of this that is pointed directly at staff to go get done. That has nothing to do with anything externally, other than how we deliver our service and how we go about our work.
I would note, page twenty-seven talks about marketing recreation programs and says the consultants reviewed the most recent published activity guides and found some opportunity for improvement. So that's one thing you could do in-house that would.
Agreed.
And branding and that.
Peter, do you feel, is there, have comments been made to address your questions to the commission?
I think so. I mean, I, this, I just would, would like for us to get more into that practice. I think, uh, you know, we don't really talk amongst ourselves a lot. Um, so, you know, I, I think we've kind of all at least signaled our priority, uh, these things. Um, so, yeah, that's.
You will note that I have asked several times for us to talk about where we think some of these for Parks and Rec, you know, at what point do you think we have to support these programs?
Yeah.
And we're willing to do it. So I'd be delighted to have a conversation about that.
Yeah. And, you know, really, like, this is kind of the first step of, of getting this document. Um, no, it's not perfect, but I have, you know, let's not let perfect get in the way of good. Um, this gets us at least walking forward, um, towards improving some things. Um.
Can.
Yeah, but I do think the zoo needs to be included, because I, you know, I, I'm happy they have a foundation, they do wonderful, wonderful things. But I think it's just gotta be part of this, because it's a major part of Park and Recs.
So the operational pieces of that would apply to the zoo and what they're doing as well, from the programmatic standpoint.
I, I would, I would like to commend the collective team for completing a pretty exhaustive task within ten months. So thank you for that. Um, I think you probably have sensed some of our frustration. The, the report is not readable very easily. The format, the format makes it challenging, the size of the font makes it challenging. Um, I crashed my, one of my computers trying to load this, it has so much, uh, you know, the files are so large with a huge number of not really necessary photos towards the end of it. Um, but that being said, I think it would be very helpful for the community if you can pick out, and I'd be willing to help you with this, um, pick out the top, top-level highlights and put them in a four-page handout that you can put out in the lobby with the other, uh, community materials that you have, that you can put copies at the library. Um, I think that there is a lot of good information here that members of our community should be aware of. But we can't expect, I mean, it was pretty apparent that members of the Park and Rec Board hadn't read through this whole document. Um, it's been, we've spoken among ourselves at different times how we have plowed through. Um, I think we need to make this as easy as possible and accessible as possible for the community.
Yeah.
Anything else? Commissioners, do we have a motion?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, sorry. Yes, all right. Okay. Rosemary, did you have something on this also?
I don't know where to start. Well, I appreciate.
Please wait until you get to the mic.
I appreciate your listening to me, and I appreciate the fact of all the hard work that's been done. I've looked at number two of the designs, which gave the possibility of a second story over the gymnasium. I believe it was over the gymnasium. And the building itself is just way more than Manhattan should have to pay for. What I find through neighborhood, people want an indoor pool. They don't want to have to compete with Genesis or the other two rec centers at the school that is already being operated. They want the ability to go and use for senior aerobics, and now I understand and see where it would be a good idea for diving. Therefore, Manhattan High School and Kansas State, they've got, they need to have some skin in the game. Uh, it's been my thought ever since a year ago in trying to get involved, Kansas State gets. by really good. They need to be paying us some money and not we paying them and giving them everything. It's just, we're, we're a small, we're, I consider us a small community. I enjoy the nice hometown air that is in the, in and about Manhattan. And I don't, I just don't see us tearing up city park with its history and building this big monstrosity that, one, yeah, there's going to be people there to take care of the kids. Well, how many are you going to use state regulations to take care of these kids while their parents go play? The exercise, even if it's leased, those leases are not cheap. I worked with the government, I helped buy some of the equipment on a lease program. It's not cheap. You've got upkeep, even on the lease, and whether it's included in the contract, is the leaser going to come and fix it without charging you more money? I just don't think everything's been thought out. We do not need a big building. People want just an indoor pool. Wherever you put it, it should be up to yourselves and the community. But then I was looking at some of the outlying areas when I got into this 546-page document. I don't know where you're going to put it. There, there's a place out there. We can find it. We can meet a happy compromise. Another thing, with all of the money that was given in this document as upkeep for these 10, 12 parks that we have?
Twenty-nine.
How many?
Twenty-nine.
We have 29 parks. I think we're a little park-heavy. I think that we need to look at that, regroup, and try to save some money someplace. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Mick Charney?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Mick Charney, 1420 Waterford. I also sit on the Historic Resources Board, but tonight I speak for myself as an architectural historian who's been studying and teaching the history of architecture for over 50 years. And that includes the history of architecture, the history of city planning, the history of park design and various movements in park design, and the history of landscape design. And so as an architectural historian, I'm going to fall into the mode, and having been a professor, fall into the mold of, mode of critiquing, and specifically critiquing plans for City Park. And I know they're conceptual, but so I'm going to start with a large conceptual idea. As an architectural historian, I was dismayed, maybe even disappointed, to see what I will call the inattentiveness to the history of the city and the history of City Park in the proposal. Whereas if history had become one of the foundational principles for this master plan, it could have informed not only the future of plans for City Park, but the grander vision and direction for the master plan as a whole. I'll give you some example of what some people might consider to be rather trivial points, but things that caught my eye in the plan that told me that history was not necessarily a priority. For example, at one point, City Park is called one of the oldest parks in the city, one of the oldest parks. It was platted in 1857, which is just two years after the city was founded in 1855. So by my standards, that makes it the oldest park, and as such, the most historic park in the city. Now contrast that with some statements made about Colorado Park, which contains a historic jail in the master plan, says that, and it also has nearby, across the street but not in the park, a historic century-old Catholic church, which is 104 years old, built in 1927. Now contrast that with how history is treated in the historic City Park. For example, the Pioneer Log Cabin is four years older than $7. It's 108 years old. And Floral Hall is even older than that. Next year Floral Hall in City Park will be 150 years old. And yet, nowhere in the master plan is there any reference to the fact that Floral Park is on the official Kansas Register of Historic Places, and Pioneer Log Cabin is on both the Kansas and the National Registers of Historic Places. It strikes me that these two buildings by themselves should be spotlighted in the park. They should be emphasized, and the park should be embellished in a fashion that gives them some sort of preeminence. Another thing that I noticed in the preferred, three proposed, three proposed plans for City Park redeveloping it, the one that was the most prepared is, preferred was the one that has the diagonal promenade that slashes right across the park diagonally. And you'll probably remember that within the master report, there are two images of a promenade. It has the golden leaves on the tree, it's the autumn and the golden sunshine and so forth. I don't know if you recognize that or not, but that's actually the promenade, which is called the Mall in Central Park in New York City, which was designed by America's preeminent first landscape architect Frederick Law Olmsted. I'm not sure he would agree that taking that promenade and reusing it, maybe even misapplying it in City Park in this way, I'm not sure he would agree with that, because little-known fact here, that promenade, that mall in Central Park in New York was actually designed for carriages at first, and was made to be wide enough to accommodate carriages, because what would happen back in those days was that the wealthy would drive their carriages to one end of the mall, then get out, walk around the park, mingle with the lower classes to the other end, where they would be picked up by their carriages that had driven down that path. So my vision sees City Park as somewhat different if it had only taken into consideration the historical context. It could have become, or can become, the flagship park for the city. It can become the front yard to the city, as the common is in Boston. It could become the lungs of the city, as Central Park has become in New York City, designed by Frederick Law Olmsted. And I hope that we would not use City Park as a landing pad for any civic, big-box project that happens to come along. Thank you for your attention, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Jessica, did you have another remark?
Do I need to sign back in?
No.
Jessica Winters, 408 Houston Street. I'm going to be a little more off-the-cuff with this. I've been going back over our budget meetings and the numbers, and I think it is rather galling to be considering spending any of this money right now, considering the fact that we are practically in a financial crisis right now. Like, we have been spending more than we have, and we are going to run out of money. And like, it could be pretty historic for y'all to bankrupt the city doing some dumb shit.
Gail Urban?
I'm Gail Urban, 1627 Wyndham Heights. Thank you, Commissioners, for taking this under consideration this evening. I've addressed you several times. I hope that you will take this comprehensive plan under consideration. You're planning for no one in this room that has gray hair or dyes their gray hair like I do. This plan isn't for any of us. This plan is for future generations, and many of those children haven't even been thought about yet. So I hope that you will take that into consideration, approve the plan, and give our Parks and Recreation Department a, a good guide to begin improving our Parks and Recreation facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Jason Kazar?
I'm Jason Kazar. I live at 2205 Elko Circle here in Manhattan. I'm an Army brat, been here since eighth grade, went to Manhattan High, K-State, moved away, came back, wife and two boys, seven and nine. And as Gail said, you know, from what Erin said, I don't think my kids are going to be able to really use any of this as their kids. And so I know some of you guys have grandkids up here, and so I'd like to think about you the same way that this is going to be for the future. From the tone of discussion, it sounds like everybody understands that something needs to happen. And, you know, my confidence is in Erin and his staff. You know, Erin obviously getting the position, and I think he's going to do a great job, and I think you guys need to have confidence that him and his staff are going to, you know, knock it out of the park, so to speak. And so I just have all the confidence that this plan that, you know, him and his team has, have put together is going to be a good plan for the 20-year vision. I think everybody knows something has to be done, and as Erin said, nothing can really start until the plan is approved. So I'd like to encourage everyone to consider that and give your approval, and hopefully down the road, as these young kids that Gail said are not even being thought about, will one day be able to use a lot of these facilities, and as our community continues to grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Brittany?
Hi, I'm Brittany, 1205 Greystone Place. Brittany Shigami-Tsu, that's my last name. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, but, good evening, Commissioners and fellow community members. I'm here in support of the Manhattan Parks and Rec Comprehensive Master Plan. I think it's a crucial roadmap to the future of the Parks and Recreation Department. I've heard, you know, up here some, you know, elements from some of the city or community members about, you know, where to put the pool, or the proposed recreation building. However, tonight, I feel like the goal is, you know, is this, and, you know, are we building the framework? And yes, I feel like that's the goal for tonight's meeting. Saying yes to this master plan is equipping our Parks and Recreation Department with the guidance that they need to make informed decisions. The master plan is a living document that's adaptable and takes input from the community, not just now in the beginning stages, but throughout the whole 20 years. You know, that's one of the parts that I really love about it. It's moving, you know, we mentioned, there's pickleball on the slides, you mentioned the cricket, you know, there's going to be stuff, not just now, but also in the future, 20 years from now. You know, adopting this master plan is giving the Parks and Recreation Department, it's the first step to building a thriving, inclusive, and well-structured Parks and Recreation system for Manhattan, you know, like any sort of organization, you know, they need a mission statement to work towards, too. I really believe that, you know, this plan is saying, do we support the Parks and Recreation Department in being, have the ability to make informed decisions, and being responsive to community needs? I'm all for that, and I hope that you are, too. So, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Kathy?
I've got two Kathys.
Yeah, oh, sorry, Kathy Jowtowski.
Is there somebody else?
I'm sorry.
Well, as you know, that's a generational problem. People, sometimes of a certain generation, there's many of us with that same name. I'm Kathy Jowtowski, I live at 100 South Delaware Avenue. I do not support a plan to put an indoor pool in City Park, which I have said before. I, I'm not against an indoor pool, I just don't want a 170,000-square-foot building that with the rec center would be $111 million plunked into City Park. I know it's been mentioned that there would be an additional acre of green space gained if roads were taken out, but that only works if we're only talking about the footprint. And this building is not just a two-dimensional ball field. It has volume and mass. And as an example, as I remember, Hy-Vee was an 80,000-square-foot building, so 170,000 square-foot building would be two Hy-Vees and two stories sitting in City Park. And I think that would have a very negative impact upon our historic City Park. I realize that the indoor pool is not the total of this plan, that there's many other details in this Park and Rec plan. And so I hope that perhaps tonight, with the motion that's made, perhaps there'll be a motion that reflects that while we're accepting and adopting this plan, we are going to still think about other options for our indoor pool and rec center and its location, so that the public will know that that part isn't set in stone. And I know it's just a concept, but I also know that you've paid the consultant $200,000 to come up with this concept. So I have a hard time accepting that that's just going to be all tossed out the window. We paid them $200,000, thank you, but we're going to do something else. And perhaps I've lived in this town long enough to know that concepts start out as concepts, and we're told, "Just concepts, don't worry about it, don't get your knickers in a twist." And then next thing you know, it's the plan, and it was too late, you didn't speak up when it was just the concept. So that's why I'm speaking up now and making it clear that I don't support putting a large indoor pool and rec facility in City Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And the other Kathy, please.
Joyce Bright, can you call her out? Yes, like my previous speaker, I do not support the redesigning the park and putting a huge pool in there. And just a couple of things I wanted to say. I remember a few years ago, there's, I attended a function where there's a KSU economist, he was a PhD economics professor, and he made the comment that, something that stuck in my mind. And he said that the most difficult concept he had for student, that students had a difficult time learning, students, was that an empty, empty land has value. Empty land, you could call it green space. And I think that, he said that students just couldn't get it through their head, that you had to put a structure on this land to have it valuable. He said that he was, he told the students over and over that empty land still has value. And what you see when you go to the park, you see, you have green grass, you have trees, you have blue sky, you can see, breathe in the fresh air. That has as much value as putting a structure on there that you can, say, earn money from. And that, students, because they want to go back there, they feel good about themselves. It does a lot for their mental health. And just really, we don't need to put a structure on there, tear down, tear down, cut down old-growth trees and healthy trees and, you know, put a parking lot up. It's not, there's no value there. The other thing they were talking about, the, another one from K-State, when I was a student there, they, the students voted on a plan, it was years ago, and whether they should invest, have a kind of a, like a tax on the student that, student would pay a fee to support this new building, or whatever the plan was. And they interviewed one of the students, and they said, "Yes, I voted for it. I'm a senior, I'm graduating, I won't have to pay for it." And so are we getting that kind of thing here? You know, people that are supporting it, are they going to be paying for it 10, 20, 50 years from now? We need to really take a look at that, too. If you support it, then are you going to be here 20 years from now and happily paying for it? Or will the rest of us, the, the poor people that are still here in town paying it for? Thank you very much.
Joyce, can you, can you please sign in?
Okay.
She has, is there another sheet over?
Oh, there's a sheet.
Is there anyone else who would like to make remarks who had not previously signed in? Bruce, and then, sir? in? Bruce, and then, sir?
Bruce Nead, 810 Pierre Street. As a little bit of background, I have observed the last two Parks and Recreation Board meetings, the city commission meeting where you considered the funding, the Parks and Rec through a general fund. I served as chair of the Strategic Facilities Master Plan that led to the three recreation centers that were built within the last, what, 13 years, or seven years? And what's really important about this is a vision for the future. The four goals, I totally support, I think you should adopt the plan, there are certainly some key points I want to share, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and their motion to you, I think raised some key issues. So within, yeah, we have three new outdoor pools in the last 13 years, three rec centers in the last seven years, I really respect the planning committee, this, the consultants, because they looked at that strategic plan, and the last goal that we couldn't accomplish was an aquatic center, indoor aquatics, and that's what the real primary goal of this And the history of those pools, and the lifespan for those pools and that rec center are important considerations in when this plan could be implemented. We definitely need to implement the trails and other thing, other projects that are a priority in, that are identified in a priority in this plan and previous plans, like Seco Park, and the description of Seco Park that was given to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. If we are not able to achieve a partnership with USD 383, K-State, and the county, we need to explicitly identify that. If we can, great, if there's not the will, or capacity, or ability to partner on an indoor aquatics facility, then that needs to be answered for the community from my perspective, because they're going to expect that that could happen, and if it can't, we need to clearly explain that. The location in City Park for an indoor aquatics facility obviously is controversial, it may be doable, I'm an architect by training and background, I believe that design can achieve compatible goals, so it's not that it shouldn't be in City Park, but it's clearly got to be evaluated along with other options for location to satisfy the community and their perspective on this. The price tag, I've been involved in previous votes on bond issues for an indoor aquatics and rec center that failed, so the total price tag, if you ultimately go to a vote, is an important one, 55 million is better than 111 million, that's a ton of money, and that's hard to sell, so there's got to be that community engagement, with the community and explanation, and the importance of education and an executive summary of this plan that, Susan, you identified, I think is really important. It's your responsibility to look long-term, that's, from my perspective, the key responsibility of city commissioners, not one year or two years, but 20 years, and that's what this plan does. It's not perfect, but I think it should be adopted, the four goals, I will reiterate, I think are excellent goals, and if you can thrash through, and help the community thrash through with Parks and Recreation, these issues, I think ultimately we could see this plan achieve the vision for the community, and that's what you want to have. I heard a comment that we have a larger-than-number average parks, or amount of parks, boy, oh boy, I think that's great, that we have more parks than the average community, to me, that's wonderful, more open space, whether they're fully used or not, the plan is great at laying out what each of these parks needs and can be done, and it's got to be worked through, you do the best you can with the resources you have, as Aaron has described, so I hope you adopt the plan, let's work on it, let's find a location for this indoor aquatics facility that will be supported by the community with a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
I'm sorry, I wasn't here on time to sign up. My name is Dan Walter, I've met a few of you, not everybody, I wanted to do two things, I wanted to say thank you. I'm one of these guys that doesn't come here every week, I don't even watch it on TV, because I fall asleep, I'm sorry, and God bless you for all your work, I, I don't, I can't even imagine all the things that you deal with all week long, trying to juggle your lives and, and keep all this together, so thank you, really, I genuinely appreciate you. The other thing was, maybe it would be interesting to you, as I've done a little bit of digging into Manhattan history, and the City Park, there was a little bit of shuffle when they took out the racetrack in the City Park, and then there was also a little shuffle when they took out the golf course that's in the City Park, but somebody came up with an idea with a, for a pool, and so they had dig day, and so they, a lot of the businesses closed at noon, and all the men and boys went and dug by hand, and with whatever machinery they could, and dug the first pool, and that's how it all got started, and then they built another pool there, and they built another pool there, and then they built a Taj Mahal Pool there, and, so that's, that's some of the foundation on it. I've lived here since 1960, I was, believe it or not, I was on the Manhattan High Swim Team, and we swam in the basement at the burnout Nichols Gym, and it was a pathetic facility, and extremely small, and we all lived through it, you know? The first time I heard about this effort, it was a $50 million aquatic, indoor aquatic park, and then it became a $75 million indoor aquatic park, and then it became a $100 million indoor aquatic park, now it's, I'm seeing you throw around $120 million, and that's just a lot of dollars, I'm, my wife and I live on Social Security, a little bit of retirement income, and, I don't know, you remember, do you remember what it's like to just not have much extra income, and the, somebody's got to pay for it, I haven't seen any mention of private donations, there are a lot of people that give privately, donate things in Manhattan, it's extremely generous, could that be a piece of the equation at some point? We just keep, sales tax, just, sales tax just keeps edging, edging up, and I, I'm fearful. Will people want to come to Manhattan, Kansas, a city that I love, I raised my family here, I was raised here? Or will they say, no, it's just, it's too expensive? So, hey, I participated in a lot of Parks and Rec activities growing up, did all sorts of things that I appreciate very much, they, they all seem kind of simple and old-fashioned now, but they were very meaningful to me as a boy, and I hope that we can keep maintaining Parks and Rec activities that continue to be meaningful to young boys and girls in Manhattan, and make it a good place to be, a good place to live, a good place to grow, grow up, and a good place to raise your family, so thank you.
Thank you for your remarks.
Joe Knob, 620 Humboldt, a couple comments. 50 years ago, I watched Student Body President Decat dedicate an auditorium at K-State, and 50 years of experience there tells us that K-State students, faculty, and staff don't support an indoor swimming facility, and I think it would be irresponsible for the university to even consider that after their experience over the last 50 years. Summer students, summertime, those 15,000 students are gone, I, in my 50 years of being here, I've never seen very many college students using our public facility, our swimming pools, they're either not here, or they're going out to tuddle, so that's number one. Number two, in all of these studies, we always consider the report of the consultants as to what the expenses and the revenue are, and consultants are very good about coming up with expenses, they know how much it costs to heat and cool a cubic yard of space, but they are very difficult to know what the revenue is going to be, and I challenge us to look at the history, the history of the three, of the two rec centers, the consultant said that that would generate $240,000 of revenue a year, my reading of the budget says it's generating about $70,000. The swimming pools, we were projecting to have revenue from those and an admission price from those that would generate so much money, but the problem is that, once we found out that nobody was going to use it, and that was too much, we lowered that price, so one commission relied on rosy scenarios of revenue, and the other commission said that's entirely unrespons, or, not, not possible, and as a result, they're not generating the revenue we brought, and we're making it up with property taxes. I look at the sales, the Starbond proposal for the Discovery Center, and again, again, the expenses are right, the revenue is not right, and as a result, we're, expectations are wrong, look, look at the revenue and expenses. Finally, if you look at the sales tax for an average, I, I don't know, I'm not, I haven't done a study, you need to know the studies, average household, I don't know if it has $30,000 a year of consumable food, clothing expenses, but 1% of that 30,000 is $300 a year. If we're asking to increase our sales tax by 1%, are we going to say, how many people would really vote to put a $300 annual membership in a pool, and have it go on for 50 years? That, to me, is, the revenue in there talks about having so much revenue, I couldn't figure out where that number came from, and how much, how many people had to go, what the price had to be, that has to be an important study to make sure that those numbers are correct. It, it seems to me that there's a lot of things that, a lot of things to consider, and one of the problems you have, as discussed, is that once you approve, I, I've appeared before here expressing concerns, and people will then say, well, wait a minute, it's just a plan, it's just a proposal, we're accepting a proposal, and then the next time you come, they say, well, we approved the plan, so now our process is to decide whether to implement, and then you come back the third time, and they say, oh, we've done all these steps, and it's, it's already a done deal. So I would encourage you to say, we don't need to adopt the plan right now, we've raised enough concerns, let's table it, and let's continue to mull these things over and figure out where the, where the price breaks are, how much it's going to cost, and then start saying, okay, this is a plan that we think we can even start, let alone approve, those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Hi, David Jowtowski, 100 South Delaware. Some of you have heard a lot from me, so I'm going to pivot a little bit, and, and say, consider we have here a plan for Park and Rec to deliver services, and I know some of, some of you have a lot of business experience, so what we have a plan is for an organization to deliver services, but we don't really have a government plan, so we haven't asked the question, how do we govern services within Manhattan? So Peter mentioned the Aspen Institute study that was set up there, so the Aspen folks is a group trying to assimilate knowledge on what's going on in the US in use sport, and there is a large public health reason for that, so there's money there, but during COVID, a lot of communities across the US shut down Park and Rec, and they also shut down private access to facilities. So what happened then is, the concerns there was, private use sport, the fee-for-service, not-for-profit use sport, would suffer. Well, in a lot of places that happened, but I think Jason probably can tell you this story better, I don't know the details, but here, what did we do? Didn't we let the clubs keep using our facilities, and I think the, the youth soccer program stepped up, and athletes started developing more services. So in a lot of communities, what happened was, government stopped delivering services during COVID, and the not-for-profit communities stepped up and actually expanded. So we don't have a plan to say, hey, youth soccer club, you can use our facilities, and you deliver all the rec stuff. So a community we're working with up in Nebraska, they allow the youth soccer club to manage, fertilize, water, the soccer fields. Right now, Ames bought land for about $3 million to build an indoor aquatics facility, that's budgeted at $30 million, they got a $10 million donation, so they're basically using about $20 million of tax dollars to build an indoor aquatics facility. So what I'm getting at there is, this is a plan for Park and Rec to be an organization to deliver good services, but the question is, how do we collaborate across local government? How do we collaborate with the not-for-profit and for-profit sector to bring services to people here? Jamie said we need to look 20 years ahead, and I think that's true, but it's not 20 years where Park and Rec, what does Park and Rec need to deliver for recreation? It's 20 years for, how does a community member in this gray population get recreation? Right, and it may not be from Park and Rec. In another community we're working with, the local hospital is partnering with city government to deliver diabetes prevention services in city space, they're in a value-based funding model, so they're, the money they make is not fee-for-service, it's whether that diabetes A1C value improves. So they want community-based programs for their patients to go to, and they're partnering with local government to get facilities, because they don't want to build them by themselves. So you see here, we're shifting from, how do you govern the delivery of services across the community, and that's the question, it's, and I, so I think it's okay to approve the plan, because as we know, what gets implemented, I could say, don't improve the plan, I don't think it really matters, because it's really, where are we going to come up with the revenue, and how do we implement it? And what I'm somewhat disappointed with the consulting documented, is it's not informing you the policy decisions, it's not really reducing your uncertainty, they didn't ask you, should we get accredited by the National Park and Recreation Association, is it worth that money? Should we adopt this Cronton, Texas A&amp;M fee-for-service model that's basically looking at fee recovery? You haven't been asked whether that's the model you should use.
Dave? Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Linda Glasgow, 2236 Snowbird Drive, I'm the president of the Manhattan Riley County Preservation Alliance, and I'm speaking on behalf of the membership. First of all, all of City Park is historic, don't cordon off a little piece of it and say, that's the historic part, and we'll throw away the rest, all of it is historic. Please preserve our village green. Please include the points offered by Parks and Rec as you consider this issue. Next, right-size indoor water. Next, and last, find common ground with other governmental units, we need cooperation in this city, thank you very much.
Thank you. Did you have more to say, sir?
My name is Roger Seymour. My wife and I own property here in town. One of our addresses would be 520 Pierre. I think we got to distinguish, they've done a really good job on their report. They've done what you've asked them to do, for the most part. We've got a wrong place for this pool if it's built. I don't know that we need to build it. We've got a want. We don't have a need for a pool. Not an indoor pool. I can go other towns and go swimming indoors if I want to. The old pool that was torn down a few years back, that's where I learned to swim at. I've been in Manhattan probably longer than a lot of people in this room. My parents bought property in this county in 1962. This has been my home almost all my life. Once again, good report. Unfortunately, it's a want we cannot afford. The city's debt is 312, 323 million dollars, whatever the number is. Any amount of money that you borrow for this project cannot be used to reduce that debt. If you had the debt all paid off and could pay cash for this project, I'd be a whole lot more enthusiastic about it. We've got streets that are tearing up cars because they're not being repaired and maintained. We've got other needs before we ever put an indoor pool in. But if you put a pool in, do not put it in a historical city park. That is the wrong place. Thank you for your time.
Mel Wurst again. Based on the comments and the concerns that you've heard tonight, I encourage you to consider either tabling, adopting this master plan, a plan of action, until more consideration is given to the Parks and Rec Board for recommendations. And particularly, recommendation number two, that has the design of this indoor recreation facility in a city park. And I think you've had some ample reasons given tonight to seriously consider the future livability of our community if we lose that wonderful green space that is, is available for free use to any citizen to come and relax in at any time. Thank you.
Are there any further comments from the public?
I thank everyone for their comments. In fact, if anyone could recognize a money pit, I would think that it would be Roger. I'm getting a bit tired of hearing the argument that we have to approve the plan now and worry about the details later. And I am concerned about the sources of this urgency. They seem corrupted, perhaps. A couple of weeks ago, I watched a prominent Realtor insist that to wait three months to adopt a 10-year property tax abatement for developers and landlords would mean being years behind on progress. Is that not a conflict of interest? And if we're speaking of logical fallacies, let's go down the list. One of our members came and said, a vote for this is to support the parks. That's false equivalency, I'm sure you know. Next, we have, we spent $200,000 on it, so we should spend 110 million more. Sunk cost. And an appeal to a motion, that think of the children thing, if you would think of the children, please think of the debt that you're encumbering them with. Each of the commissioners raised concerns about the report, the overall plan, funding sources, and budget. Those are all core components of the proposal. Mayor Adamchak herself cited a grave concern about the accessibility of the information for the public and offered to make it more accessible. I would hope that the commissioners will stay true to the public's trust and their own instinctual concerns and table the item until clarity can be reached.
Any additional public comment? Going once, going twice? Okay. All right. Seeing no indications of additional comments to be made, public comment period is now closed. Commissioners, do you have additional comments or questions for staff?
So how, we've heard a lot about the partnerships and stuff like that. How have we gotten into that at all yet? Or how's that going?
We've had some initial conversations, but again, we're dealing with a concept. If we were to move forward, it would be our intention to identify proper partners, which would include both other governing bodies, but of course, the foundation's a partner, potential fundraising avenues and donors. If we're moving forward, I assume you're specifically speaking of the Aquatics Project, so.
Yeah, pretty much.
But I would assume that would include sponsorship opportunities.
Correct. It could, like, anything could be potential naming rights, things like that. All that would be pursued in taking this to a development phase.
But for other sites as well? We've talked about.
Yeah.
Fields, the ballparks.
Yes. So part of, part of what we're talking about in that operational section is that cost recovery and identifying other means for, for financial gain, so.
Thank you. Commissioners? Anything else? Thank you. Thank you.
You know, I think the one thing that, there were some recommendations for what's going to happen in the future, but I think so often, we don't plan for different things. I mean, pickleball, for example, took us all by a storm and we didn't, people had to go to Womago to play pickleball. Mayor Adamchak brought up cricket, and we do have a growing number of people that are interested in that. I kind of found the report to be lacking in, you know, it's supposed to be a 20-year report. What are people going to be playing in 20 years? Maybe we won't even have people going to the park. They'll just put on their headset and have interactive videos with, I don't know. But I just really think we lack foresight, perhaps. And we really, in many things that we're doing, we're not thinking about how, just think how much electronics have changed in 10 years. So that was my only really disappointment with the thing, other than the, the sort of wrong numbers for the Discovery Center.
I think there, I would say, Karen, I think that there were.
There were a couple.
There were several things. I mean, esports were, was named specifically. Bicycle pump tracks, is that right? That was a new one for me, but.
Parkour. Parkour.
Parkour. I think we do have several around town, and I would encourage more to be developed at the parks that, and along the trails. I think, as you said, pickleball took us by surprise. But I think that's part of what we need to consider, is being nimble and being able to make those adjustments as new trends do emerge.
And I think there are also a couple of things we could do, like disc golf in Warner Park, that would be relatively inexpensive and allow us to have various groups come in and have, you know, competition because we don't have, we only have two 18-hole disc golf things, and we need one more. So there's a number of low-hanging fruit that we could maybe attach.
There's a whole paragraph on cricket, right next to pickleball, actually.
Yeah, I know, but it didn't.
So I do think the nimbleness will come, I think, as a funding and budget discussion and how we're budgeting and leaving those, those caveats there. We, I think we budget fairly to the brim, wanting to get the projects in. And so it's probably having that mindset of, of how we're prioritizing and leaving a little bit more flexibility within that.
So what would a more flexible document look like to you? Is it like that we need more specific wording in the document? Or like, what is it that you?
I realize, you're absolutely right. They mentioned cricket, they mentioned various things, and that's good. I just didn't think I heard about it for the public to hear about it tonight. That was part of it.
But, but, I mean, you talked about needing to be more nimble. So like, I know we've talked a lot about reevaluating this, you know, annually or biannually. What does, what is, what is lacking for you in that?
Well, I think the concern about the Rec Center that we've expressed since January, and it keeps coming back to us, does not seem to me to be as responsive or nimble as I had hoped.
Okay. I, I don't know. I was glad to see that the overall cost comparison of having just the pool and the Rec Center, to me, that's pretty clear. And I would hope that, you know, future commissions, once, when that does, when the time comes, that that's still in there. You know, because to me, that was, I was going to ask that question of whether or not we evaluated the construction cost, the additional construction cost. And so I was happy to see that in there tonight.
So I do think the Section 7, the action plan, that's four pages, is, to me, the most beneficial part of the master plan because it, it itemizes each park. But it also puts a dollar amount that we could potentially invest in that park, even if we don't do X, Y, and Z that was listed out. It gives just a framework and a, I mean, a theoretical budget because there's, there's not funds for that right now. But I, I liked the way that was written out. And so if we are going to look at some sort of trimmed-down version of that plan to be more accessible, I would really think that Section 7 on the action plan has to be, to me, that's, that's the most important part. Knowing how we got there, also very important, but, but I think to me, that's the most, I mean, it's the action part.
It's kind of an à la carte menu.
Yes.
Of like, hey, we've got some money. Let's take, let's look at this line. Okay, that's $150,000. We can, we can cross that off this year. It's not that we have to do everything all at once. We, frankly, we don't have the money for that. And that's, you know, I don't think anyone.
Or the time, or the people, or the.
Yeah. That's why this is a 20-year plan. And so, yeah, I agree. Like, I liked that kind of itemization of, these are some identified needs and, and an estimated cost.
And I think you're absolutely right. And that really was good. The inventory was excellent.
Yeah.
And many of the things were very affordable. Some of them is minor signage, you know, $5,000 for signage seemed to, I, that's a lot of signage. But I think that there are a number of things we could do that, and that's why I asked Erin if we could have just a composite of that instead of having to, you know, plow through 18 million pages.
Commissioners, do we have a motion to move forward?
Let me just ask a question. We've had the motion here, it's just that one sentence that's there. I've mentioned before, is there support to do that motion and say something like, with consideration in those top three points from Parks and Rec? I don't mind doing the fourth, I just think that's something we should do no matter what. I mean.
I mean, I don't, I'm not a big fan of including all of those. I mean, I do think, number two, the location to be reviewed, that's a given, but from hearing from everyone in going through this process before and other things, not wanting us to get too far and then decide we can't change our minds. So I understand that one. I do think, number one, that information's already within that. And then, number three, yes, I think it's an encouragement to.
I was going to say, explore that.
Explore it. Because, I mean, when it comes down to it, if we decide to, to do any funding or put anything forward, we are going to have to make those decisions independent of any sort of partnership. So I wouldn't want to dangle this card of a partnership that, if that doesn't come through, we aren't, I just feel.
Yeah, that one I was going to revise a little.
So more of like a, of course, encouragement or exploring that, which it sounds like that's part of Erin's.
I think including those four, though, give us a, excuse me, a nod to the, the Park and Rec Committee who really spent a lot of time and who would not have voted yes had not those four things been in there. So I don't think it really limits us, but it just acknowledges that we take recommendations from our committees.
I think that the steering committee was the, the group, which I was fortunate enough to be a part of, was the one that spent a significant amount of time. And we did have a discussion on these recommendations and, I think I can speak for the committee, and didn't choose to move forward with those additional recommendations from the Parks and Rec Board. But the, the steering committee spent the time with it, which is where my comfort lies. And not, also in not complicating what's in front of us.
I would have a hard time voting for it without the four recommendations.
We've got two with the four, do we have three with the four? I just don't want to do this and do it over.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's six and one half dozen in another committee with the recommendations. I, I, I do want to acknowledge that, that we have heard the, the Parks and Rec Board and that, you know, we have taken that into consideration. So I, I don't, what does it really do to add those, add those to the motion?
Can we kick that over to Erin? Is that, I just, I want to make sure we're not, like, locking or making something more cumbersome than it needs to be. And so I think, Erin, do you, can you weigh in on those ones? I, I think my biggest concern is number three, and John already said, a potential revision to that, that's my biggest one, is I don't want us to go into something assuming we're.
Partnership is explored versus be formed.
Yeah. So, I mean, again, this is the commission's discretion to, to make the motions and, and vote how they choose. My, what I would say is, based on what these are, if we were moving towards a finalized plan, all of these are going to be explored and, and/or completed, depending on what it's saying. So whether it's in the motion or not, the reality is, is we, if, if it's funded and we progress down to that kind of design phase, then all of these would be kind of accomplished.
Erin, I appreciate you saying that. I think I, I've come down with Karen on this. I think it's important that we acknowledge that these are important conditions and that they need to be addressed in an open and transparent way. I do agree with Jamie and John that number three, the intergovernmental partnership should be explored. And I would like to make a motion that we accept, that we adopt the Move MHK Parks and Recreation Master Plan, PR 2323 CIP, CP 406P, with the four recommendations posed by the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, with the one edit that an intergovernmental partnership be explored with the City of Manhattan, Riley County, USD 383, and Kansas State University. Is there a second?
Second.
City Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamchak?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollough?
Yes.
Motion carries, five to. Motion carries, five to zero.
We'll take a five-minute intermission and recess, return in five minutes.
I think they heard us on City Park.
I see, I didn't recognize you.
Jake, over here.
Well, yeah.
Is he ready?
Now, if you're back.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
Absolutely.
We will now resume the city commission meeting of June eighteenth, twenty twenty-four and we have a item for discussion and to provide feedback on issuing industrial revenue bonds for sales tax exemption for Ag Hall project and the property owner's request for city participation in the relocation of a public sewer line. Jason, I think is going to inform us about the sewer and then we'll hear from the owner's representative.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, we were approached by the owner, Derek Richards, about his plans to invest in the Ag Press Building here at fifteen thirty-one Yuma. It's a property that obviously has been in our community for a long time. Derek's been exploring options on the property at some length and, and for some time. I know he's even hosted some events at the site for outdoor venue activities. He's on the cusp of investing, I believe, close to about a million dollars in the property. And before he does, we really want to address this sewer line. Obviously, at some point, this, this was permitted and allowed and it's just not something we do today, allowing structures over our sewer lines. We would prefer that sewer line be up towards Yuma or towards Fort Riley Boulevard and go on the perimeter of this site. The alley of El Paso continues to the east, so it's really not an issue once you get beyond this site. But you can tell there, there was clearly an alley here at one point a long time ago, but the building occupied that site today. So in our discussions, he had asked if there were any tools or incentives that he could approach the, the city about. We talked about the industrial revenue bond process where the sales tax exemption on construction could be an opportunity. We pointed him to what Blade Majes has done in front of the commission for the Wareham and highlighted the, the improvement and the opportunity for the site. Ag Press is a, a unique opportunity. I think Scott Seals is here tonight to talk to you a little bit about that. So looking for feedback on the use of IRBs for sales tax exemption, also looking for feedback on the city participating, if not covering, the entire relocation of the sewer line. So if you don't have any questions for me immediately, I'll turn, go ahead, Commissioner.
Do we have any history with these sewer lines and their relocations?
Yeah, and I think Randy's here, he could probably speak to some of these. On occasion, we get an entity that wants us to actually vacate the alley so they can build over it. In that instance, we have asked them to go ahead and help us pay for the relocation of the utility because they're coming on top of it. There are some examples I think Randy has of buildings that did have it underneath that we have.
Yeah, that's one more specific. Do we have any like ones like this where we said a long time ago, yeah, you can do that, it's no problem and now we're like, yeah, it is a problem.
Yeah, the Royal Towers actually has a sewer line running through the middle of it. Fortunately, it's a stairwell and it's not actually the building, but it still, it still goes over the top of it. Randy might be able to expand on it.
So this is just one of several locations like this. This is typically, you see this in school buildings, so the Ninth Grade Center, seven dollars. Woodrow Wilson is another one. So in my time here, we've never had a project like this where there's an existing building on top of the sewer main and we've had to relocate it. So there's not really precedence in my time here for whether the city pays for this or expects the developer to pay for it. Everything we've done has been somebody that wants to build something over an existing main and so they've been responsible for those costs and we have not participated. The, the project that Jason referenced, Royal Towers, it's a little bit different where the line is in between buildings. It just so happened they were allowed to build a stairwell over the easement and so that is essentially taking care of itself. The plan there is eventually we're going to build a sewer to replace that main and abandon what's going through that property. But that was a project that was in our CIP before the redevelopment.
Randy, could you just briefly describe what would be entailed in relocating the line?
Well, a lot of times in this instance, we don't have enough fall in the sewer to do a relocation. In this, in this site, we, we believe we do. The consultant, their consultant has looked at it, so we believe that there's, we have the ability to basically construct a manhole on one side, multiple manholes around the property and reconnect it basically from the west side to the east side. The existing main underneath it could be either filled and abandoned. It could be utilized as part of their private infrastructure if, if they chose to do so and it could be a part of their internal lateral system. I don't think that's the route they would want to go here because of the aging condition of the main, but those are options. So it could be built without impacting any upstream service. It just, the new sewer main would be built on top. A new manhole would be built on the west side of the building. All the new sewer would be built while the existing sewer is active and it wouldn't be till they need to abandon that main, that there may be some sort, sort of sewer interruption. But usually this is a, a pretty simple process, it shouldn't impact any of the public infrastructure.
I know it's premature, but do you have any order of magnitude of what the cost might be for something like that?
Yeah, the, the consultant, SMH, has put together an estimate that's just under a hundred thousand dollars. I haven't reviewed that. I think it seems about appropriate based on, on what I've seen for sewer construction.
What's the risk if we don't do this?
Well, so we, obviously, we, we have a big program that is intended on rehabbing older infrastructure. We'll, we'll go in and line sewer mains. In the areas where we have sewer mains running under buildings, we have not, we've opted not to line those and rehabilitate those for obvious reasons. If something goes wrong, we obviously can't knock down a building to go in there and repair it. So we have televised the infrastructure typically. It's, it's in, it's in good shape. I, I have not, I have not seen information on this particular line, but I don't have any reason to, to believe there's an issue with it right now.
Can I speak to that too? I think Commissioner Opel, one of the concerns is the consideration in determining whether or not to proceed with the remodel is if that sewer line is still there. So I think, I'm not saying it won't happen if the sewer line isn't moved, but it's certainly a variable in that decision. And so, you know, obviously, spending a million dollars to revitalize this property has a lot of benefits, but one of them is it's going to significantly increase the appraised value of the property and, and we think pay for itself the eighty-five thousand dollars for the sewer, just in terms of the increased property tax revenue from the property over time, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, we actually talked with Derek too about sales tax and it generating along with property tax, a pretty viable pot of money that could go towards this. In the event we're open to this concept, and again, let's, let's get Scott up here, he can talk a little bit more about the project. But in the event we want to pursue this, we're looking for feedback on the IRB and feedback on a development agreement. Derek and I talked about possibly his construction actually taking on the relocation of the sewer. We've done these development agreements where we allow that private group to go ahead and per our specs, per our inspection, coordinate that construction. So we're not bringing in a new contractor to intermingle on his site with him at the same time. There's some more conversation that needs to happen there, but he's open to that conversation and we would obviously have a lot to say and, and, and design-wise and construction-wise for our infrastructure to go in and around this building, so.
Jason, if, if we choose to do this and pay for it, is that setting a precedent for futures? I mean, are we at any risk of other places coming up and saying, hey, you did this here, now you need to pay for it to happen at our location?
We participate in a lot of infrastructure in this community, whether it's new subdivisions, whether it's redevelopment of sites. And our participation is usually per policy in most instances. In other instances where the policies don't necessarily apply, then we get into this negotiated mutual benefit type of scenario. As Randy mentioned, this is the first time he's ran into this scenario. So it's difficult to suggest that the owner should have to relocate something that we either allowed the building, I say we, the city, at some point in the history, allowed the building to be constructed over it or weren't aware. And, and this is, this was constructed during nineteen forties?
Yes.
Yeah, and I can't go back to records and I can't look and see, and see how it transpired. But the sewer obviously went in before it.
So does, does the sewer go under that other building too?
There's a, this building, Karen?
No.
The other side.
Bund Thai.
Oh, here? I think it's right on the edge. I don't know if they moved it when they built that.
With GIS, it's always trust and verify, so. It's not, it's not so many.
When that hotel and that, that building were put together, I know, we even were looking at infrastructure off Yuma that ran north-south right beside it. There was a public piece of right-of-way and you can kind of see it, it's kind of really awkward. The, the distance between here, I believe that is, yeah, that's us. So we own, we own that, that little strip where the cream cup used to be. It was an access point into that site and then it hooked into the alley. So again, just some very odd City of Manhattan right-of-way issues on the site. And, and if you obviously take a bigger look, at some point, Martin Luther King Drive, Four Riley Boulevard, probably teed and created a whole different set of circumstances than, than obviously occurred today. So that right-of-way and that city, city land throughout this entire area, it, it's not traditional. Been a lot of changes over time. So clearly, again, we just don't allow structures over the top of lines and, and we're in a position where he's investing, this is the time in our opinion to move the line and we're willing to work with him, if you all are.
Where do we move it?
I think it's either up to Yuma. Randy, does it come from this point up to Yuma or come from this point down to Four Riley Boulevard?
Initially, initially the preference, ideally for, for us, if we're looking at cost dollars, you're probably going south of it because that's less that you'd have to relocate. If you go north to Yuma, you've also basically got to, got to go around this little commercial area too and go all the way down to Fifteenth Street and then come down it. So I, I wouldn't want to try to snake a portion of public infrastructure in between those two buildings. So I, I wouldn't want to try to snake a, uh, portion of public infrastructure in between those two buildings. So the shortest distance would be to go around the south. I don't, I don't see any particular advantage to trying to go north to Yuma Street.
Scott, would you like to make your presentation?
Sure. Okay, so I'm Scott Seal. I work with Derek Richards. So I'm, uh, Derek and his wife Cory on this property together. They are presently in Honduras, uh, and so we're unable to appear before you today. So they asked me to kind of be their representative here and, uh, to give you kind of a history of the project and kind of what we're talking about and what they think, uh, the benefits for the city and the community are. Uh, some background, as Jason mentioned, the, this building was constructed originally in nineteen forty-six as the Viking manufacturing plant, which was an agricultural implement manufacturing plant. Um, interestingly, I just learned the other day that my mother-in-law grew up, uh, on Pierre, just a few blocks away. Her father worked at this manufacturing plant when, originally. So it's part of why Derek and Cory were so drawn to this building is the history of it within the community, within the neighborhood, um, the, the architectural history of the building. We don't have a lot of art deco. And if he were here, he would correct me, it's not technically art deco. It's whatever came after art deco. But that, that kind of style does, we don't see a lot of examples of that in our community here. Um, but also, it's, it's just in the neighborhood, a neighborhood that hasn't had a lot of public or private investment over the years, um, to, to be able to, to put some investment into this facility that honors its historic importance, its architectural importance, but also, um, provides value for the community and, and provides value for the city. Uh, it's very important to them, um, not just to do a development. So built in forty-six, um, as you can see, there were, the warehouses were added in sixty-six. So, um, as you saw on that, there's the original structure. There's an attached metal warehouse. And then there, to the south, uh, towards Fort Riley Boulevard, there's also a detached metal warehouse. Um, so AgPress bought the building in seventy-one, uh, after Viking Manufacturing went out of business, um, and they did commercial printing there until two thousand eighteen. Um, it, grass and grain still, was in the front offices. They are no longer. They have since vacated since this was made, um, just within the last few months. Um, the warehouse had been leased, the warehouses were leased to K-State to store books after the hail fire while they were doing, uh, those renovations. Derek and Cory bought the building in two thousand twenty-two, got in on the historic registry, and have done a lot of work with regards to that, um, and have been operating it since. And... So the need, Derek, is, is very important to him to, as I mentioned, to preserve the, preserve the historic building, but also to create a centrally-located venue that can seat up to three hundred people. Um, we have really large venues in town, and we have a lot of smaller venues, but there's not a lot of that kind of mid-range, um, venue. Um, some of the things that we do have are way outside of town, um, that, that offer really nice facilities, but not really centrally-located. Um, and also mentioned, uh, importance of preserving, protecting, and beautifying the building, uh, and also the area, and, and provide a space for the community to utilize for events, for arts, and entrepreneurship. And one of the things that we, we, as you mentioned, the, um, the Wareham Project, a lot of the research that they've done focused on bringing people into the community. About their research showed that forty percent of the concert goers were coming from outside the community and on average spent twenty-seven dollars in the community while they were here. Um, I think especially as a hotel venue, this facility is sitting right next to a hotel also, um, provides opportunities for income from the, from the transient guest tax for their community. And then, um, also the sales tax from the, the venue, the venue space. Um, there is a bar and food services that are provided by a third party that's also a local business with physical location. Um, here in town, they own a couple of different places. So supporting local businesses and just that multiplying factor of being able to, uh, improve and, and pay for the benefits that, that are received. So. Um, we talked about it as a wedding party venue. Um, they also have concerts there, as Jason mentioned. Um, they've only been ex-outdoor concerts so far, but, uh, if this project were to go forward, um, could also add indoor concerts. Um, they also talked about the importance of what they call off-night scheduling, which is, you know, bigger acts that normally the Manhattan could get. They're going to be in Denver on Saturday, and they're going to be in Kansas City on the next Saturday. You get the Wednesday night show, um, to, to get some more draw. And again, bringing people in from outside the community to spend money, um, and also, but also provide, uh, a benefit to local people.
Scott, can I ask you a, like, a very not appropriate question?
Ooh, this sounds exciting. I'd love to.
Um, does the entertainment image represent, uh, anything that I, a band or something that I don't know?
I have absolutely no idea.
I looked at that, and it made me think of drunk driving, which is not something.
Uh, you know, I don't think that's what they were going for. Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I will, I will share that concern. So, um, and then, you know, we also, the, the project as a whole, um, also offers space for, so the office space, we are very close to, I think, having a lease signed for the office space. That would involve spending a significant amount of money renovating that. Um, there are, um, small businesses that have operated out of the warehouses over the years. Um, and, uh, right now, it's being, one of the warehouses is being rented as kind of a staging ground for a large local employer who's doing a significant expansion of their facility and really just needed a place to park some stuff for a while. So it, it's really served, um, to benefit a lot of the, a lot of the community and a lot of economic development stuff, even as it is now. And so if we can take it to the next level, um, we have a chance to benefit a lot more from that. And then some kind of conceptual images of what might be in the future. So the budget for the renovation project is, is around one to one and a half million, um, which would be to renovate the front office space and create, um, the event venue and also, um, do some whiteboxing of the, of the warehouse space as it is now. Um, the funding so far has been all private, uh, just, just Derek and Cory spending their own money on the project. Um, and then they've also been able to obtain some both state and federal historic tax credits to help with that. How the city can help, um, is we, with the IRB bond and sales tax exemptions that were recently passed, um, it's an opportunity for, um, to provide some benefit to the developer to be able to spend money and implement this project. Um, it's important to note that at the, at the moment, we're not asking for any property tax debatements or anything like that through the IRB program, um, just specifically focusing on the sales tax exemption. Um, the, the proposal would generate sales tax revenue to, to the city through both weddings and concerts, um, selling alcohol and food, uh, and then also ticket sales. And then, as we mentioned, uh, you know, any bringing people in from outside that might spend, you know, others, on other services, the hotel, things like that. And that's pretty much it. So we, uh, in, in, in closing, feel that both the sales tax exemption and then also the, the moving of the sewer line would be ways that, uh, the city could invest in this project that will pay themselves back in the long run through, uh, increased property tax value and then also sales tax, uh, money flowing into the city. So.
Scott, have, um, the Richards considered, I, I appreciate what you were saying about there being few venues that have that mid-space. It makes me think of, um, the Four Points by Sheraton, I think, is popular with local meetings that are a little bit larger, you know, at hundred, hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Um, i- is there envisioned that at any point in the future, there might be a prep kitchen or?
Yeah, that's part of the, in the proposal is, is a full kitchen that would be built, uh, in the facility so that, that, you know, it's, the food would be provided by a third party, but there's site, onsite. Uh, really, the biggest, the biggest cost driver that, that's held back, the implementation of these ideas, is number one, the full kitchen, and number two, the, the bathroom facilities there just are not up to par. Um, they're not ADA. I mean, there's literally like seven steps to go up to get into the bathroom. Um, the, and they're just so, it's, it's the, the kitchens and the bathrooms that would be the major overhaul necessary to, to do something like this. So.
You might suggest that when you make this presentation, again, in addition to changing that photo, you might add in, um, local meetings or small conferences as another investment opportunity?
Yep, I can mention that.
Actually, a question for Jason, or maybe it's for the both of you. Andy, Stan, this is, we have the sewer line under the building. We don't want it under the building. They don't want it under the building, and so we're seeing that the city would help. Is there, say they didn't care if it was under the building, could the city force them to do this, to do the project? Or is this really just a mutual, let's help each other out?
Randy, stop going back to your seat.
I don't want to say we would force anything, but then again, if it collapsed, it's a line that goes beyond that party. It serves a lot more than that site. So.
No, I realize that. I'm just, it's still my question.
When, we're kind of opportunists when it comes to this type of stuff. So we wouldn't have been out and been proactive about this from our perspective, kind of waiting for opportunities, other projects to present themselves. And, and that's when we would typically try to take care of it. Because when, when could we ever have an opportunity to have this done again if they go through this project? So yes, initially, when this came to us, uh, through the community development process, uh, the intent was to force them to, to make this relocation. Uh, we were willing to, you know, wait until, uh, they had this grander vision. You know, they were investing in the property.
So the city has, I mean, the city wanted them to say, "You have to do this to do the, to the project."
From my perspective, yes. I'm only one, one, one entity of the city. I mean, the, the full intent was, yes, in order for this project to proceed, we would like to see it. I don't have any regs or anything like that that would force them to.
Then how would we make them do it?
Would, yeah, I mean.
We would approach you all with that.
And, and ask this to pass something to say, "You have to do this?"
Yeah, I mean, there's a, there's a process by which you all can implement eminent domain. And that starts with a resolution, and it starts with acquisition and relocation. So, I mean, we can initiate that process, and I think Randy's right. If we can get a willing owner here to, to relocate, we should, we should take advantage of that investment. I think the million, the, the significant side of it, going in and repairing something may not be significant enough, but what they're doing, we feel like is significant enough. Let's come to the table. Let's get this done. There are other ways we could do it, no doubt.
Okay.
And I think too, that, like, as I mentioned, that, you know, they're going to, in, conduct this extensive of a remodel. Having that sewer line under the building is a significant risk for the property owners as well.
Yeah, I was saying, there's a mutual thing in this one.
Yes, yeah, so.
So.
I don't think he needs to be forced. Like, that's what I'm saying, is that it's either not going to happen or, yeah.
Uh.
Right, Commissioner?
Ultimately, I'd say this is Derek's problem, but is there enough parking for the three-hundred-person events to like comply with all the necessary? I mean, ultimately, that's up to, I mean, that's a business decision that somebody's making as to whether or not they have that. That would be my only initial concern. I do love the fact that this property is, um, being improved. Um, I like that it's somebody local who's coming in and wanting to invest in the community, and I think that that's great. And I think there's, um, the steps that have been taken so far and, and making sure it's on the historic register and those things are great. So personally, I'm a fan of that. That's just my only thought. And then the relocating the sewer line, asking us to, Randy, that's coming out of utility, like, one of your funds?
Yeah, we would propose.
I mean, they're all our funds, but.
It comes out of the sewer fund.
Sewer fund.
Yep, to cover it. Parking, I think recently, this is handled from a zoning perspective. Um, so the review would have happened under the zoning regs that exist.
Right.
So I think his private issue is probably more substantial in terms of accommodating.
Yeah.
If three hundred people drive a car there, he's probably not going to be able to park it.
But it's the, the zoning's already on that.
Yeah.
For that event.
So, but I do think he, I've seen some of the site plans where parking is addressed, but there's outdoor activities as well. He's got multiple phases. Longs Park is right next door, Yuma, Wide Street, a lot of parking that's available from a public standpoint in and around the site.
But it can, okay.
I was out there on Friday. There were, I don't know, a hundred fifty, two hundred people.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Parking was fine.
Good. I mean, I'm excited about, about this.
And there's, there's off-street parking there on Yuma too. I don't know if it's diet, like, there's Yuma, and then there's like off-street parking on Yuma and off, off on the west side.
Yeah, this is more me not knowing how the process works on like, when all of those things and wanting to make sure we weren't offering something or approving something that when it came down to it, the use wasn't going to be there. This is more me not knowing the steps of, of how that happens.
Yeah, I think we rezoned it probably in February or something like that. Um, yeah, Jamie, I, I agree that like, this is a, a, a local person. I think Derek grew up here.
Um, he would want me to say his, he's a sixth-generation Manhattan night.
There you go. Um, and wanting to, to invest his own money in this. Um, obviously, something was either intentionally or unintentionally, um, there was an oversight allowing this building to be built, but we can't go back and change the past. Um, and I think it's, it's a, a good gesture, um, considering the types of incentives that we've had for, uh, development in the past. You know, yeah, I know eighty-five thousand dollars seems like a lot, but considering the amount of investment that Derek's going to put into this and the impact that something like that could have, uh, if, if a, if that line were to fail, that's a pretty big line. So, um, being able to access that, um, you know, if, if it failed now, we would have to fix it anyway. So. Um, yeah, so I, I think it'd be, it's being proactive. Um, it's, it's kind of fixing something that the city, city, you know, eighty years ago may have, may have messed up. Um, and then as far as IRBs, I think that's, again, uh, we've been pretty, pretty easy with those. Uh, there's really no financial risk to the city with those, um, especially in a, a big construction project like that. So, um, yeah, I think let's, we should explore. Obviously, I want to see the details, things like that, but, um, I'm supportive of it.
And I think it's important, you know, we keep, we speak often of the city being more efficient and, um, I think this is a great example of, let's be efficient. If, if the construction is going to be going on, let's tag, tag team with that project and get this carried out. Um, this is, um, we will have public comment. Do you have, would you like to make any remarks? Since we have one member of the public here.
Please tell us the architectural style of the building.
Uh, Mick Charney, fourteen-twenty Waterford Historic Resources Board. This came before the board, and we approved it with, uh, great relish and unanimously to be nominated to both the Kansas and the National Registers of Historic Places because it is a unique building. Uh, it's what I would represent as the last phase of art deco, where a lot of the decorative detail is taken off, especially the kind of sharp-edged geometrical designs that you'll find on buildings like the Empire State Building or the Chrysler Building in New York. And because of the, all of the glass block and the curved corners, uh, I think this phase can be properly called the streamlined modern, or sometimes the art modern with an E at the end of modern. It's a rare example, especially in factory design of that era, the nineteen forties, and even rarer that it's here in Manhattan. And there's probably one of our building in town that would fit in that same category as an art modern, but unfortunately, the university just decided to raise it. That's the gymnasium wing on Ern. So, um, in order to keep its status on the registers, anything the city could do to help Derek out, I think he would greatly appreciate because I think he's already pursuing those tax credits which were mentioned. And if you combine state and national together, that gives him up to forty-five percent in tax credits, if I'm correct on that. And, uh, there was one other thing I was going to mention about it, but I skipped my mind right now. But it's a, it's a, it's a real jewel. And, oh, about preservation. And, oh, about preservation, yeah, one of the goals of preservation, when I was a student, we heard, you know, you want to preserve a building, you don't want to tear an old one down, you want to readapt its use. And we save in the long run in terms of efficiency of the building, as you mentioned, mayor and so forth. So I encourage you to help out Derek any way you can. Also, I think it's still up your site, your 3D site?
The Macwork should be.
Yeah, pressdistrict.com. If you haven't visited that site, you can take a 3D virtual tour of the inside, which is really cool, because it's not renderings, it's actual photographs, and you can move through the building and upstairs, and you'll get an idea of what the interior, that office space especially, looks like with all the glass block walls, and then the curved corners in what was once the factory portion, it's a really neat building. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Could I just say, I'm delighted that we're looking at a building that was made in the 40s. Often, I think with historic preservation, we think it has to be a log cabin or a sod house or something, and we aren't probably saving those things in Manhattan that we should be looking at and saving. We've, you know, we've got the historic downtown district, that's wonderful, but, you know, there are interesting architectural gems throughout the city that would be great to somehow preserve.
Public comment is now closed. Commissioners, do you have any additional questions for the presenter or for city staff? Do we have direction to offer to staff?
I'm good with both.
Yeah, let's see some, yeah, get this in front of us, I'd like to vote on it.
Same.
As this is a discussion item, no motion is needed. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
You need to state which day it is.
Yeah, you have to say.
You have to, you have to.
You have to read this stupid day.
Motion to adjourn the June 18th, 2024 City Commission meeting.
Second.
Clerk, will you please take the roll call?
Commissioner Motta?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitten?
Yes.
Mayor Adamcheck?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opel?
Yes.
Ocean and Carrie is five to zero.
Thank you. At 9:12, the meeting is adjourned.